Welcome to the City of Lowell, Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for November 13th. Meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers. Members of the public may join the meeting as well in person and via calling in, in Zoom, and all the other methods as well. Just a few housekeeping for folks. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you can just turn it off or put on silent, it'd be appreciated so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Remove under "Continue Business." And also, if you're speaking tonight, folks, if you can just come to the lectern when the petition's called. If you're here to speak, everyone will be given an opportunity to talk. So please, don't talk over each other. Don't yell during the meeting, it'd be appreciated. And just state your name and address for the record as well. Moving on, under "Continue Business," we have ZBA-2023-20, petition is a variance. The applicant is Mitesh Misri, property located at 22 Carley Way. The applicant has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board Appeals for variance approval to construct a two-story additional at 22 Carley Way that would exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio, FAR. The property is located in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. You want to just tell us about your project?
Thank you so much. Thank you, zoning board members. My name is Mitesh Misri. I reside at 22 Carley Way, Lowell, Massachusetts, for the last 15 years. As last requested by, I updated all the revised copy of site plan as well as framing plan, as well as I added additional site plan information. With me right currently, I have an 85-year-old father staying with me. He has to mostly hang around in a lower area of the house, and that's the reason we are building addition in back of our house, which is basically, currently, it has a, back of our house, there is an eight-by-10 deck, which we are going to remove it, and we want to attach addition to that area. An entry of the addition will be from the kitchen, and we are requesting variance and permit for that thing. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir, for your comments. If you have no further comments, open up questions, open hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, go ahead, ma'am, you want to come to the lectern? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Carla Miller, and I live at 46 Carley Way. And my questions are, first of all, I'm not really clear on the plan. So the plan is a large room addition with a balcony. So if the father is 85 years old, I'm not sure how exactly this helps him. I also wanted to maybe make a recommendation. If he sleeps on the second floor, because this isn't a bedroom that they're putting on, you know, they might want to consider a chair or stair lift for him to get up and down the stairs. So if we could get, you know, clarity about what this addition is going to achieve. Because our concern is that we don't, you know, want more cars on the street. We have a lot of cars on the street right now, and if this addition turns into, you know, just more room to have, you know, more people during holidays and such, we feel that this house in particular has a room over the garage. Three bedrooms has a room over the garage. So, yeah, just more clarity on what it's going to be used for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, madam.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the zoning board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Tai. I live at 31 Carley Way. I've been in the neighborhood for 23 years with my family. I've known Amida and Mitesh for over 15 years. They're very nice people, really great neighbors. But I did come this evening to speak in opposition to this project. When our homes were built in 2000, they were 1,900 square feet. The previous owner of their house did put on a one-car garage with a room above, which does increase the square footage of the home. Even with this additional footage, the addition at far exceeds a reasonably sized addition for this neighborhood. It'll be out of keeping with the current look and feel of the neighborhood, and more importantly, it opens up the door for more very large additions within our neighborhood. I know that it's easier to add on to a home than to seek a bigger home, especially in the current real estate market. I myself have five children. There's seven of us living in my house, and sometimes it feels like we're busting out the walls. I understand. And I would probably be okay with a smaller addition, something with a smaller footprint, maybe something that's not two stories, and maybe keeping it under 700 square feet. The neighbors of the neighborhood, several of them did sign a petition which has been submitted to you, and we respectfully ask that you deny the permit as it is currently being presented. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, madam. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seen none, the portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
My name is Neel S. Soni, and I am neighbor of Mitesh Misri, 30 Carley Way, and I have no objection or extension of the room.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Aren't seen none, the public hearing is closed. Before we move on to questions from the board, questions and comments on the board, sir, did you want to address any of the comments with the neighbors and the butters here tonight?
Definitely, I want to address some comments here. My father is 85 years old, and he goes upstairs for sleeping, but most of the day, he has to hang around in the middle area of the house. And this two-story addition is not really a two-story. It is a cathedral ceiling, which is a high ceiling, and a balcony I'm putting there to keep a watch on him, that he's doing fine or not, you know? So it is like similar kind of thing. It is not like two-story. I'm not building any bedrooms or anything like that. This is the place where he can actually enjoy the nature. We have a very good forest behind our house. He can enjoy the nature. He can walk around outside in a garden area, and that's the reason, and my wife and myself can keep a watch when I'm working from home on him, you know? So that's the one thing we are basically looking for. I don't know what was the question at the lease here, but see, the extension is more about accessibility. We can provide all the kind of, like, some kind of ladder or some kind of actually lift to go to the upstairs. But with the family, I got my father here to give him a family life, and he has to hang around most of the time with us, spend time with us, and that's the reason he's most of the time downstairs, you know? So he watches TV with us, he have a dinner with us, he talk with us. So that's the reason we need more access and space downstairs. So that's the reason this addition we are building. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, we did receive a letter, petition of 17 signatures of people against this project as well. So we're going to submit that for the record, that sheet that we got today. All right. The Chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I have here is on the additional site plan document. The new addition is said is on the back of the house. Unless I'm mistaken, it seems like that's a pretty-sized drawing of an addition. So maybe I just need a little bit more clarity. What's the size of the addition that you're looking to build? Because I'm not sure if I can, 22?
It is 18 by 22, and the height of the ceiling is 16 feet.
16 feet.
And it's a similar kind of, like, one big room, which has a balcony from my bedroom I can watch downstairs.
Okay, again, I can appreciate the concern of the neighbors that, you know, that they don't want to change the dynamics of the neighborhood. But it also seems that you are putting this addition in the back, and it, I'm not sure if there is any neighbors in the back of your house. I drove around the other day, and it looks like it's all green space in the back of your house?
It is a state, it's a kind of state forest behind my house. So there is no houses behind my house.
Let's see here. I know the floor area ratio you're looking for is kind of high, but I think I have to consider the fact that we need to make sure that it aligns with the zoning requirement. again, I have to determine how it impacts the rest of the neighborhood, because if it's not seen in the front or through the other neighbors, I'm not sure if it negatively impacts the neighborhood. But it is 45% above the maximum floor area ratio that you're looking for. So is it something that you would consider making it a little bit smaller?
I can, yeah, absolutely, no problem, yeah. You can consider looking smaller. The thing is, the way we decided is because it's like a, the 18 by 22 is a good size of room where he can continuously walk around, you know? And he can have a good space to walk around inside the house all the time, you know? And if it required, is it an issue because of the height? Or issue because of the width? Or we can definitely address that.
Yeah. I know someone also addressed the fact that they're concerned about additional parking, but your father being 85 years old, I'm not sure if you're going to be doing a lot of driving around?
No, no. We don't have any additional parking right now. Miss, we have two cars, which is good enough. We are not planning any additional cars or anything like that.
Okay. And your garage, how many cars does that fit?
One car.
One car? And the rest are outside? Okay. I mean, it's a nice neighborhood. I drove around on, yesterday, and I could see that it's a very quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and it seems like your neighbors, they've known you for a while, and they came in opposition, but not to disrespect you. It seems like maybe there is a potential, some kind of compromise that you can consider, especially if someone is thinking about the impact of the size. If, I mean, you know what you need for your father, but I'd have to hear what the rest of my board members saying, because again, it's 45% above, you know, what's typically within zoning, so I'll...
Some of our neighborhood, like House Number Six, they build up a considerable big addition behind the house, which is almost 15 by 22, you know? So there are constructions done in our neighborhood on addition side, you know? So seeing that, I took actually aspiration from them, and actually, I seen myself went there to see the things, and based on that, we build up the plan here, you know? So it is, there are already additions done in our neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I'd like to interact with the two neighbors who rose in opposition to the plan.
Yes, of course, the floor is yours.
Questions for you, woman, please. I'm sensitive to your concerns, but quite frankly, I just don't, I just don't understand them entirely. I'd like to see this gentleman be able to, to be able to build this addition. And it sounds as though you would too, if we could come to some compromise. Now, what that compromise would be, that's what I want to get at.
Oh, okay. Well, I can't speak for Carla or the other neighbors, but I know...
No, I'm speaking directly with you.
For me, I feel like if it wasn't two stories, and if it was, I don't know the size of Number Six's addition, so I can't speak to that. But I know that the two-story thing was really, because I think it ends up being almost 1,700 square feet by the time you do it out. So if it could be one story, I understand wanting space for his dad. I do see his dad, you know, coming in and out of the house, and, you know, he does have difficulty with stairs and things like that. So I'm amenable to something just on a smaller scale. Really, it's the two-story thing that I'm not particularly excited about. I think that that, I would prefer to see it smaller.
Did you want to add anything, ma'am?
I'm not sure which one is Number Six, but if they're talking about the Sullivan's.
Yeah.
They put, they added a sunroom on. That would make more sense, because if he wants to see nature, and, you know, they want to put an addition on for that, maybe a sunroom would be better. When I was talking about the cars, I wasn't talking about, you know, the father driving a car. I was talking about some of the events that go on in our neighborhood, that there are a lot of cars, there seem to be a lot of them, and there are a lot of cars that, you know, along the side of the road, to the point where, you know, you have to stop and wait for other cars to go by. So, you know, that room being that large could mean bigger events. Could be used for bigger events, so that's what I meant about the car.
All right. That makes it a little more clear. If I could, thank you, thank you, girls. If I could speak with the petitioner?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Having heard those additional comments, if you were to amend this plan to satisfy the concerns of your neighbors, what would you be willing to offer? And before you answer, the second floor, is that open space?
It is not a second floor, it is just a high ceiling.
Okay, okay.
It is just a high ceiling, yeah.
So...
We are nobody staying there.
Right, that's, right. So it's aesthetics.
It's like a ceiling, high ceiling.
Right.
Where, it's like a sunroom, big windows are there, so we can see behind the house, nature and all these things. We want to make it, because the costing point of view, I don't see much like difference. So we consider putting big windows so we can see it. But it's a single room with a high ceiling.
Right. So, back to my original question. If you were to amend the plan, because it sounds as though you all get along, and what would you offer?
Whatever is acceptable, because I'm ready to consider height, I mean, it's a width and, like, width and depth same, but the height I can reduce, you know? Absolutely, I can reduce the height.
I know, but what...
Is it a, is a problem with the height? Then I can reduce, like, it doesn't, should look like a single story? Then two-story, right? That might be the concern.
I mean, I understand your primary concern is your dad, and that's admirable, I understand that. But you may be able to assist your dad, save some money, and appease your neighbors. That's a triple play.
So if you look at the plan of my house right now, we have a long kitchen and we have long living room. When, there is no privacy at all, you know? So when we are sitting there, when we are watching TV, when he wants to watch a TV, when he has to hang it around, we need a separate space there. And that's the reason we are considering this, you know? Yeah. And here, the New England, the cold is more here. Winter is longer here. He has to stay in a house longer and longer. And I want to give him a quality life, that's the thing. And he likes nature, so he want to keep seeing behind. He's, my mom passed away two years back, he's alone. So he's hanging around with us. I want to just make sure he can have a good life.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, but I did notice on visiting the site that you don't meet the criteria for public notice with the eight-and-a-half by 11 you have posted on a single post. It's impossible to read from the public way. And the intent of the public notice is that you can understand what the petitioner is asking without going on your private property to read it. So I think the public notice was missed with allowing the residents to understand clearly what you're trying to do that are in the neighborhood. And that's the intent, I believe, of the public notice being posted on your site. So I'd like to see that corrected, and I'd like to see a public notice placed on the site that is legible from the public way.
Absolutely. And when I was putting the notice, I actually sent a picture here just to make sure that this is the right one I'm putting. And I got a lot of confirmation, and that's the reason I considered putting that. I wish I come to know this early, then I correct it early, you know? So sorry about that thing, but I'm continuously working with the zoning board here, and they are helping me to get through this, and I really appreciate that. And we are going back and forth on many documents. That's what I see right now. I wish I know this early, and I am happy to correct it, no problem.
I'd like to see us continue this application and get the public notice, or public to have the ability to see the sign posted from the public way. That said, I'm having trouble following the documents you've submitted, but I think I understand this. You're doing a structure that's on concrete posts. And so you're basically building a platform that's raised above the ground with no big foundation walls. And then you're, this is a relatively large room, 18 by 22?
Yeah.
And that room is being basically added as a family room? Because that's how you have it labeled?
It's kind of, yes. That's the thing. Downstairs, we don't have additional room, and we will consider that as a family room, you know?
Okay. But then you have on the second floor, you have two spaces identified which add up to 110 square feet, one being a closet. So the balcony, if you will, is part of the second-floor structure, but there's also a closet being added?
It's because we are building the balcony, so that area is my bedroom. So we have a window there, both side. So one of the window area, we are actually putting the balcony, balcony, and we are putting closet there. One of the area we are putting closet. But other area is basically hang around into the balcony and come down from the balcony.
Well, as a suggestion, as you go forward here, maybe with a change in design to lessen the impact in the neighborhood and the FAR, if we eliminate the balcony and the closet, you'll basically be coming more in line with the existing FAR somewhat by reducing the overall square footage by 110 square feet. And maybe what you could do, just as a thought, is you could have the roof structure be pitched so that you could have maybe windows from your bedroom looking down into that space, or even have an operable that you could use, almost like a balcony, if you will, from your bedroom, so you could still have visibility down. But this way, it's around this without having such a big impact on the neighborhood and without having such a big ask of the board to grant a variance for such a deviation from the FAR. So I think just as, if we can continue this, if I have support from my other board members, I think coming back with a reduced height and change the roof line to make it appear more compatible with the existing structure and reduce the impact on the neighborhood, and then align it more closely with the FAR by reducing the 110 square feet on the second floor. That would be, I think, a direction I'd like to see someone on your team kind of try to go to. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah. I have to work with architect to do that, right? So I have to think on this.
I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm just suggesting, I think that that would be a good win, I think, for the neighborhood. But it's your, it's your project.
Yeah, I'm still not clear why I cannot get it, but I'm trying to understand.
Well, the deviation from the FAR is substantial, and so anything that would reduce that would be, I think, appreciated because it's a substantial deviation, like I said. And I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Mr. Kelly, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tend to agree that scaling it back is probably the best bet on this to try to have it comply more with zoning. As is right now, I would find it hard to find, to approve this with the intent, whether it meets the intent of zoning, 18 by 22. I mean, you have a lot of land back there to work with. You're taking away green space by going that far. I think if you can scale it back a little bit. The second floor, open space area? I understand Dennis's concerns, and I kind of tend to agree with him on that, but I think you could, if you keep it open on the second floor with the balcony and the closet, as long as it's scaled, that's scaled back towards the, towards the structure a little bit more? Because right now, the way you have it laid out is, for the balcony, it's, what, eight feet? Extension from the, yeah?
It's part of the room, actually.
As part of the room, yeah, I understand that the purposes of the, the purpose, I presume the purpose of the balcony is just there as a, you know, as an egress or means to get up to the second floor to the family.
Because I can watch from, if my dad is sitting up there, I can watch that.
Yeah, understandable, but eight feet seems a little long. You can scale, I think if you scale that down, scale that down to, you know, even half for, half for that.
We can make smaller.
And that's, that's saving you on the square footage and ultimately on the FAR as well. And with the extension of that, to that extent, also the closet as well.
Yeah, we can eliminate closet also, I don't worry about that.
I mean, I can understand, I can understand the need for the closet. It makes, and I guess what you're trying to get at somewhat makes sense? If you're going to go, you know, have the extension, you don't want that little breakout where the closet is, I mean, it doesn't look good, but it's kind of, you know? I can understand with that. But I would suggest that that would be the same, kind of similar, that's similar, if you scale those back as well. Scale back the 18 feet seems, 18 feet out seems a little long. If you can, maybe you can scale that back to...
16?
I don't, I don't know. But I think 18 feet is too much. And again, like I said about the balcony and the closet, I mean, it seems like it possibly could work, but again... could work, but again, we're trying, we're trying to get it back to the point of as close as, as close to FAR as we can. That doesn't mean that we're gonna approve it, but as it is, it's very excessive. So I would like to see, again, yeah, this redone comeback. To Dennis' point, the notice was insufficient as far as the posting. Also, I'm not sure if, this is a sample of what you posted, it said notice, is this what, the sample of what you posted right here? Yeah. And I'd also note that on this, what it says is, note the property address, says type of permit. It said, type of permit, special permit, site plan review, subdivision variance, historic permit, et cetera. You put special permit. This isn't for a special permit, it's for a variance. So you gotta fix that as well.
Yeah, I'm honestly speaking.
I understand.
I'm a resident, you know, I'm not a contractor, I'm working with zoning board people, they are guiding me, and I'm just basically following that, you know, honestly.
Yep. No, it's just, it's gotta be clear to the public what's being requested, and as Dennis pointed out, it has to be visible from the, from the right away, so the public is aware of what's being requested, because I know this is the second time beforehand, and, I mean, even from what I gather from the neighbors who spoke in opposition, they weren't clear what the plan was. I don't think they were even aware that there was an open, you're, you were planning on having the, the second floor open space, or, or, or the ceiling up to that. I don't think that, didn't sound like that they were aware of that either. So I probably would agree with Dennis and maybe seeking a continuance of this, have the notice reposted so it's proper and visible to the public, and scale back the plans as far as the size of the addition, and we'll see where we go from there. But that would be my suggestion, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The Chair organizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I remember this when it first came up two months ago. But I'm trying to remember exactly what happened. It was, you sent in documents that had a project in Nashua.
It was, yeah, it was a wrong site, wrong submitted by my.
You had multiple site plans in there, one was for Nashua, and you didn't say that the deck was getting raised in the, in the backyard, right? So we asked for continuance to fix those things. Now, these other issues that, I don't know, come up now, as far as we need a continuance because of the FAR is too much, I don't, I don't necessarily agree. We didn't have a problem with them two months ago when you were here. Sure, if you, if you're willing to do that, to appease the neighborhood, more power to you. I don't think an eight hundred square foot addition is some extravagant addition on your house.
I agree.
But if you're willing to be a good neighbor and work with your neighbors, that's, it's totally up to you. Like I said, we, we went through this, I'm not gonna harp on it. It got kicked back because you included some plans that weren't part of Carly Way. And then the deck issue, which you took care of as far as, I mean, the balcony and the closet, are they necessary? No, but not everything on an addition is necessary.
It's, it's all part of the house, like, the way we build it to just make sure it looks good, we can have access all over the places, we can watch downstairs.
No, no, I, I get why, I get why you're doing it. And if you're willing to revisit the site plan and the scope of the project, that's great. I think, you know, this is all invisible from the street, it's behind your house, there's nobody behind your house. So, you know, I'll go with the will of the board, I don't have a problem with what you've submitted to us. I understand why you're doing it. It's not gonna be additional living space for cars or anything like that, you're just trying to take care of your father, which is a noble thing to do, so I'll go with the will of the board, but we've already gone, this is the second time through on the same exact plan, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Hovey. Sir, this is your second time around with us. You know, I appreciate the updated plans, but to my colleagues' comments, I think a big thing for me is kind of the procedure in terms of public notice and public information. You know, you have to redo the, the sign and the posting, so it's, it's a sizable sign in view of the, from public way. So we're gonna continue the matter because of that, of public notice requirements, you know, you didn't do that. And, and again, to, to your effects, sir, you know, I, we understand, I understand that you're just a resident and there's a lot of process and steps to go through with this, but it's, it's done for overall, for your benefit and for the neighbors and the butters and the city as a whole. And to me, just observing all the conversations tonight, you know, you have some neighbors spoken opposition, but they, they actually really seem to just want something fair to them and a compromise, and, and you seem very fair too as well in terms of being a minimal to scaling down the size of your project. And, and again, to, to, to my colleague's point, you know, this is just our recommendation, you know, it's, it's your project, it's your build. I do know that, for, for me at least, how it stands, you know, I want to see some of these reductions before I feel comfortable voting in favor as well. But again, I really think something can be done here that's, that's more kind of in line with the neighbors and just more palatable, just, just for the neighborhood as a whole. So we're gonna continue the matter, so you can work with your architect, your team, to kind of scale down the project that you talked about and, you know, reducing the height and the roof line, and then the, the public notice, just make sure that's, that's up there nice and big, and it's visible from the public way. And I, I believe that's, it needs to be, the notice needs to be there for at least twelve or thirteen days. So, Mr. Katrumpis, when's our next available hearing, sir, that we continue this to?
I didn't get it, yeah, so the last part. I definitely want to continue, and I really, because last time when I put these things, I didn't have a same feedback about the width and height and size and all these things. I keep hearing this now. So if you guys can help me out, that what is the considerable size which can be, get approved? You know, as a resident, I want to know it, how, who can help me on this? Because I can keep coming here, and there might be some more suggestions here, you know? And I'm happy to work with you guys, but I really need help here. As a resident of Lowell for twenty-two years, I'm trying to do this first time, how can I get the guidance? And I'm working with your zoning department here to basically get it done. So what is the best way to do it, you know? I really appreciate if somebody can help me on that.
Of course. You know, I think my recommendation is working with DPD, Planning Development Department, and just in terms of the site plan and the layout and just the overall project, you know, just to reduce it so you can reduce the relief that you need. You know, but again, sir, it's, you know, it's your project, so, you know, you do what you think is appropriate. You heard the comments of the board, I think, if you reduce the height, reduce the roof line, scale down the project, the footprint, it would be more favorable. But again, I would recommend that you work with your architect, your team, and just work with DPD, they're very helpful as well. So we're gonna go forward with a vote to continue the matter. Ms. Katrumpis, when's our next hearing date that's available?
January eighth.
All right, sir, so we're gonna, we're gonna continue the matter to January eighth, and then that should give you plenty of time to do all the stuff that we talked about. I would reach out to DPD, the Planning Development Department, so they can help guide you as well, okay? So can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-three dash twenty for variance for twenty-two Carly Way to be continued to January eighth.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve, continues.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve, continuous to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member McCarthy.
Approve, continuance to January eighth.
Member Brier.
Boo.
Member Proko.
Approve, continuance to January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, so this matter has been continued, we'll see you January eighth, all right, sir? And just for the public notice, there'll be no other notice, this will be the notice for this hearing, so there'll be no further notice. All right, folks, have a good night, we'll see you January eighth, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, under new business, we have ZBA dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, petition is a variance, the applicant is David and Tamara Olivera, property located at six oh four Central Street, applicant have applied to the zoning board of appeal seeking a variance approval to utilize the upper floor of the existing commercial building for an office or business use. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district, the project requires variance approval per section six point one for relief from the minimum off-street parking requirements and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is there anyone here from that project tonight for the petition?
Yes, sir, John Bavuso, I'm speaking on behalf of Tamar and David Olivera, the owners of the property at six oh four Central.
All right, good evening, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we hear you, thank, thank you, good evening, sir. Can you tell us about your project?
Basically, their project, let's see, we start from the beginning, they were renting space on Mill Street, they produce signs for vehicles, businesses, there's very little walk-in traffic here. You would email them, I'm actually a customer and a friend of theirs, they produced a sign for my boat, so that's how I got involved in helping them out in their very good deed. There have been four previous permits since twenty seventeen to convert this commercial building to mixed-use residential on the second and third floors. None of those permits had ever been finalized, or no inspections ever been called. When Tamar and David brought the property, they asked the inspectors to come in, see what needed to be done to finish it, they realized that the work that had been done was completely wrong, and most of it had been covered up. So they had to open all of the walls and ceilings and redo all of the work that had been done by the previous owners. This is a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming structure built in nineteen oh one as a commercial space. I can find no special permits or occupancies for any other use on this building whatsoever. If we look at the table of parking requirements, six point one point four, based on the gross square floor area of this building, they require five parking spaces. So they have contacted their pastor at the Church of God's Life at two forty-seven Central Street, and he has agreed to lease them five parking spaces to meet this requirement. In front of their building, there are seven public parking spaces, as well as six or seven more directly to the right across Richmond Street. So I, they have no space here to add more parking spaces. The lot, the building occupies all but six hundred square feet of the lot. Again, this is a nineteen oh one building, it has been in use, you know, for hundreds of, for quite a long time, and they're just asking to convert, to put the building back as it was. They're not looking to expand the use, change the use, there's no exterior work planned. All of their renovations, and if you look at the building permits that were granted and have been almost completed, it's all for repairs from previous owners. So we do ask the board to consider letting us use the building, letting David and Tamar use the building as it was originally intended, which is office space.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments, sir. Now we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, thank you, my name is Cheryl Darlin Calavetinos, and I own the building at eleven and nineteen Mill Street. I have the closest parking lot to that building. Maximus was renting for years from me till they bought their own building where they are now. The main reason I evicted them was over-parking. It was always parking issues. They would constantly park in spaces they could not. They would park in other unit spots, they would park in handicap spots, they'd park overnight, and there's no overnight parking. I was constantly reminding them not to park there, and they would promise me that they would not, only to do it again in a couple of days. I was looking to see the number of buildings in front of me on Google Maps today, and a picture of my building is there with three Maximus trucks parked where they're not supposed to. One is on the sidewalk, one is in handicap, and one is in another tenant's spot. Even without the top floor open, I have their employees and their customers still parking in my lot. I have photos and plate numbers. With more employees and customers, this, this is only gonna worsen. They only have two spots, well, you're saying five outside, but there's all kinds of business out in front where they are now, and they're usually taken up by their vans. They already have vans and trucks parked illegally every day, blocking sidewalks, so I am highly opposed to them getting approved with this minimum parking. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Well, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I am a neighbor of Maximus Building, we've been at six and eight Richmond Street for sort of forty-three years. It has been a parking situation. We've been maintaining that property of the parking adjacent to the memorial park of Mill Street. We have seven spots there. Currently, I was allowed to park, have four spots for us. As you can see it, six and eight Richmond Street, only street and a house and a street that has no parking. Where am I supposed to park my cars? Or the nurses will come to see my mother, she is handicapped at seventy-six years old. We do have an issue with parking for Maximus. I do get along with them to a certain extent, that I've been asking them sometimes to move their vehicles. Some of their employees are rude, which I found my car already been ventilized more than once. There is an issue going on, I will oppose that. We can get along, but seven trucks constantly parking in the parkings on Central Street into Richmond Street is a no-no. I'm sorry, but I'm against it.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Deana Coach, I live at eighteen Mill Street. I do, my house does a butt, the Richmond Street, they do take, like Mr. Fernando, they do take the whole parking spot. I think when they did purchase the building, they should have took into consideration where they're gonna park all these vehicles at. You know, we have to take care of the neighbors who have been there for a long time. They just don't, they just come in and think they're gonna take all the parking spot, and heck with all the neighbors. That's not fair, I don't agree with that. I think they should have really thought about that before they bought the building, where they were gonna park all these vehicles at. There's a whole bunch of other businesses up there, where are they gonna park their vehicles? There's a hairdresser, they need place to park to, they're just taking over. I mean, they're parking on walk signs when people walking by, their cars are right there. I don't agree, I just hope you guys agree with us too. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name's David Coach, I'm the president of the Back Central Neighborhood Association, and I live at also eighteen Mill Street, that was my beautiful wife you had just listened to. I'd like to bring up the issue that there was parking on Richmond Street. Now, parking on Richmond Street goes along with Walter J. Lemieux Veterans Park, and that was supposed to be appropriated for the people who lived on Richmond Street, the one home there, that was to allow them to have some kind of parking, because, because there is no parking on Richmond Street whatsoever unless you're parking on the sidewalks. Now, there are, there are other people here tonight that have businesses that have ample parking. You have no problem with these people whatsoever. Now, we have somebody coming to the neighborhood, I know these people, and they're good people, but the thing is, you don't have parking enough. You just gotta come up there a couple of nights, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I've lived at eighteen Mill Street for sixty-two years, and I come home on a Friday night after work, and I can't find a parking spot. I've lived at 18 Mill Street for 62 years, and I come home on a Friday night after work, and I can't find a parking spot. So I just hope that you take it to heart that, you know, I know they're running a business and they need parking, but there's no parking there to be had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none of that portion of property is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Sir, if I could offer one more comment?
Yeah, just one more minute, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All right, seeing none of the public hearings closed. Sir, did you want to just comment on, on some of the comments of the neighbors?
Yes, sir. I absolutely agree. I have been to this location. Parking is tight. Again, they have arranged to lease five parking spaces down the street behind the church. They do have a warehouse where the manufacturing is done, where they can keep their commercial vehicles. And one other thing, if we do look at the off-street parking requirements at 6.1.3, you know, this business has been in use, not their business, but this commercial property has been in use for, since 1901. It seems like it would predate the zoning. I don't think that the parking should be held over them in this way. I mean, they've put a lot of time and money into this building and to come up now at the end of the project. I mean, if they are parking on sidewalks or handicap zones, ticket them, tow them. I mean, that's absolutely correct. You know, that's wrong. No one wants to see that.
That's all I have to offer.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to open and question the comments of the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly would like to see a new business flourish in that neighborhood. But with, with what's been presented here this evening, I don't, I don't see how that's possible. Now, I don't want to trash the whole idea. However, without another detailed parking plan, I can't give this my approval. I'm going to read to you a question that was presented to this board from Ali Kada, Director of Economic Development, who was sent to our associate planner Dylan Ricker. And it says, "The neighborhood has serious on-street parking congestion." No one disagrees with that. There absolutely is. That's what I'm worried about. This, I'm not so sure that, that this particular building is conducive to, to the business. But I'm willing to give you the benefit of providing another detailed parking plan to prove me wrong on this. So Ali goes on to say, "A detailed explanation, the number of cars they anticipate having parked there for their own staff on a daily basis would be helpful." Their own staff in addition to customer traffic. Now, it appears as though, I'm sorry, I didn't get the name of the gentleman that we're speaking to via Zoom. What's your name, sir?
Oh, John Bavuso, sir.
Okay. May I call you John?
Please do.
John, how many, how many vehicles does this business own?
I do not know how many they own. I know that they have, I believe, four employees. And again, they have arranged for parking for five vehicles behind the church down the street. So I do not know how many vans they own or personal vehicles they own.
All right. Well, that would also be helpful to know just how many, how many vehicles are there absolutely necessary to be there on a daily basis, contributing to the, the parking congestion. Another part of, of my suggestion for the, for the parking plan that's also been recommended to us, I, we've been receiving the letter from the pastor, and I'd like to know, does, is it your belief that these five additional spaces alleviate the problem that the neighbors say exist? I don't think you've proven that. Also, in this detailed plan that I'm asking for, we'd need some sort, some greater binding legal assurance from the pastor that these additional spaces are going to be always available. From what I read, there is, there was no cost to them, which is none of my concern. But how long is this agreement in good standing? So as I said, it's tough. You got this building. It's been there forever. I get it. City would like to see it, you know, repurposed for its, its original intent. Get that, too. But the way the, the neighborhood is currently structured and the activity that goes on there and the limitations that that activity presents, I can't favor the petition. But that's not necessarily a no vote. I'd like to hear from the rest of the, my colleagues and see if we can't come up with something that that allows us to, to coexist over there in the neighborhood. I, but I, the concerns of these neighbors are absolutely legitimate. And what's been presented thus far does not satisfy those concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just talk about this parking letter that we have. So the parking letter is not, is it, is it addressing the owner of 547 or the tenant at 547? It seems like it's the tenant maybe, but is that possible to discern whether or not the church is the owner of 547?
They are, sir.
They are? Okay.
It's God of Life, I believe, church.
They are the owner of the, okay, terrific. So they're then saying that the back of their building is available during the week for the storage of vehicles, and that is roughly five buildings down from this location. We don't have a plan for that, and it doesn't look like that spacing is maybe even striped. But I think that's something that I'd like to see is a plan, and also something from the applicant as far as the size of the vehicles that need to be parked there. And then I'd like to see, Peter, if, is it possible that we can find any complaints or any issues that the transportation engineer or the parking enforcement group would have had with this user in the past? As far as maybe excessive tickets or not adhering to regulations regarding parking on sidewalks or that kind of thing? If, if there's a careless attitude towards parking in the past, I'm not sure I could feel that there wouldn't be a careless attitude towards parking in the future as well. So I'd just like, like to understand if there's any, anything from the city that would verify one way or the other whether this is a good fit. I'd like to see this building used. I'd like to see a business that's thriving there. But it has to be done in a way that respects the neighborhood and respects the neighboring businesses. So I'd like to see this be solved and be a, a solution that fixes both pieces. But I think we definitely need assurances for the parking, and we need to know whether or not there's anything. Right now, there's a sign, I think, for two-hour parking on that, on that, in front of that building. And so if there's a habit of not honoring parking timelines, that kind of thing, anything we could find that we could get, and then maybe some good faith effort from the applicant stating that they will be good neighbors and be good citizens of the city regarding parking in this location. But I would really like to see this succeed.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely pull up that information either from any of our inspectors and development services, or I can talk to the parking officers, too.
Thank you very much. I'd like to see this continued, if we could, especially for the parking layout in particular. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I understand the concerns of the neighbors in this Back Central. I think everybody would agree. It's an extremely congested area, especially that area at 604 Central Street, where the parking is limited everywhere. It's all on-street parking, all city-owned parking. This building has no area for parking on this. That is a clear hardship to this petition. There's no parking available. That is one of the criteria of the variance that's being sought. There is clearly a hardship on that, especially in the light of the fact that the only parking available on-street is city-owned. I understand that, I think, I know one of the residents brought up the parking over on Richmond Street behind Lemieux Veterans Park. That's clearly city-owned as well. It's clearly posted that, that parking there is only to be utilized for people who are at, at the park and attending the park or using the park. So those issues are to be dealt with by the city. We're here for the purposes of a variance. Yes, it's for parking, but we have to follow the criteria. We have to know that there's a hardship, whether, if there is a hardship, whether the variance would be for the public good and whether the intent of zoning is satisfied. Clearly is a hardship, as I mentioned before. Public good, we have a commercial business, commercial building to, that's looking to be repurposed or purposed for what it initially was for, to include additional businesses, office space or businesses. That's clearly for the public good, providing additional business, business to be utilized. Intent of zoning, with a building of 19, as was brought up by the petitioner, that was apparently built and erected in 1901, prior to zoning being utilized. I don't think parking would have been much of an issue in 1901, prior to zoning, when this was established. So I think that this clearly meets the, meets all the criteria. It hits all the marks for a variance. And in addition, the petitioner has provided a letter from the church down the street at 547 that says that they'll, they're offering to allow them to use five parking spaces during normal business hours on Monday to Friday for no charge. They also state, I know it's been brought up by Ms. Carter, about wanting to know what the use of the church is, but they clearly state also that the church usually meets only on the weekends and sometimes has meetings at night and Bible studies at night. So it sounds to me like the church isn't really utilized a lot during the course of the day, which would satisfy the use for parking for this business. So I think this clearly meets the criteria for a variance. I will take the word of it. The only thing I would say is, we condition it on the fact, as, for, for the purposes for DPD, we condition it on the lease or some sort of lease agreement being utilized, working with DPD or utilizing a lease agreement with the petitioner and the church to make sure that those spaces will be made available and for their use. And I would also, I don't know if we can condition it or not, for the building to post signs for the additional parking behind the church, just to make sure that they're, that anybody who's utilizing that building is aware that there's parking available at 547 Central Street for the church. But I, I would like to suggest that those be used as, utilized as conditions. But I think that this clearly meets the criteria for a variance, and I would support this under those conditions. So. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm torn with this one a little bit. It seems like the owners of the building are operating in good faith as far as renovation of the building, whereas maybe the last owners weren't. So I can appreciate that, and they're trying to do the right thing. At the same time, there is an issue with staff not being good neighbors. You know, the comment of, well, if they're parking on the sidewalk or doing this, that, call and get ticketed. Well, sure, but the local police department are pretty busy. They don't have time to just drive around Back Central to, to ticket cars if they're not obeying traffic laws. In a perfect world, sure, they wouldn't have anything else to do but ticket cars that are parking on sidewalks or parking spots that they're not supposed to, but, you know, by the time they get around to it, the cars could be moved. There is an agreement with the church to lease five spots. What I would have liked to seen is the owners of the property take advantage of that now to alleviate the on-street parking, and especially the parking on crosswalks and parking on sidewalks. And, you know, the response of just call and get them ticketed, that's, that's not what we want to hear here also. You know, it's the owners of the building's company that they're doing this. I would expect them to want their employees, especially in a company car, to follow the rules of the road. So I'm a little conflicted on that. I would like to see what kind of lease we have and timeline. It'd be great just to say, well, they have a lease, but if it's only for six months, well, the upstairs might not even be finished in six months. So this might not alleviate any of the parking concerns in the neighborhood. And I don't disagree with Member Callahan. It seems to be consistent with, with the three criteria that needs to be met. You know, the on-street parking isn't reserved for the neighbor's business, so this business has just as much right as anyone else to park in a legally assigned parking spot. There was one other thing, depending on how we go. According to our economic development person, the signs of this business are not in compliance. So if we do move forward or continue this, I'd like to see that as a condition, make their signs on the business compliant with the zoning regulations. But again, I think this is something that we may need to see a little bit of good faith behavior on parts of the applicants here. Like I said, they have just as much right as anybody else to the on-street parking spots. This neighborhood, there's going to be no off-street parking on an existing building, really, in, in the neighborhood. So the businesses, unfortunately, it's a first-come, first-served. That being said, we don't get to park on sidewalks and crosswalks or wherever we want just because there's no parking. And if that's being done now, I have no reason to believe one way or another. It's just a concern that was brought to us that that has to be addressed before, you know, we move ahead, we add more cars in there, and then it's a free-for-all in that neighborhood, and that's the last thing we want to see. So I'll listen to the rest of the board and just, I like that kept in mind. Whatever way we move, we need to get the sign in compliance. And seeing they're a sign business, I would hope that would be something that they could tackle pretty quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Member Callahan mentioned, I mean, this definitely falls under the hardship. But I'm a firm believer of, of being a good neighbor. And, and one of the concerns that the people who are opposing this is not they're opposing the business, but they're opposing, just based on what I'm hearing, the business owners, employees, and the way they park. It's It's easy to say to ticket them, but it's also easy to say, why park there in a handicap zone? Why park where you impede the public? So that's my concern. It's true that everyone has the right to have your business, you're the property owner. But there's also something about being a good neighbor. And the fact that you have this potential five parking spaces, I think it would make sense to have a formal agreement with the church, if possible, and that you enforce your employees or guests or whomever to park in those spaces, because it is tight. I mean, even myself just driving around trying to find a parking place so I can view the property, I couldn't find parking. So I do understand the hardship. And again, it's nothing against the intent of your business and trying to enhance the neighborhood. But I think from what I can hear here, it's mostly about being a good neighbor. And however that can be reconciled, I think, would be would be in favor by this board. I do agree with Member McCarthy that I think this should be continued because we need a definite plan on how, you know, this situation can be resolved. And I think part of it has to do with being, finding the space, as you mentioned, the five parking spaces from the church. That should be formalized into an agreement. Because if it's not formalized, maybe the employees can go back to their old ways, keep blocking the streets and then making the neighbors unhappy. And you don't want that. So I would be in favor of continuance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Sir, the gentleman on Zoom, I think, Mr. John. I just have a few questions for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can you just speak a little bit about, did you get a chance, you or your clients get a chance to read the memorandum that was sent out on November 6?
I believe, no, sir, I got the one from the appeals board. It's a memorandum. Sorry, I did not.
Okay. Because I'm sure it was sent out, if not to you, to your clients. And it just talked about the project, the summary, the comments specifically. Yeah. Oh, your name's on there. Okay, John. Okay. Sir, can you just, can you just go through that memorandum for me? So I just have a clear understanding of what, where the breakdown is. Obviously, the neighbors are here. And we all know that parking is a big, it's a very big issue in the neighborhood. And I know you have the five lease agreements from the church. Again, to my colleague's point, we're going to need a formal lease agreement with the owners and with the church. The, and then, again, to my other colleague's point that talked about the economic development director's comment. Before anything can go forward, can you bring your signage into compliance with zoning code?
Of course.
All right. You heard the, you heard the board. I'm also in agreeance in terms of continuing this matter. So we can get more of a detailed plan in terms of the formal lease agreement, kind of the parking layout, just. And then for you, sir, John, if you can just work with the neighborhood and your neighbors, I think it would go a long way with your project. Because as it stands right now, and I'm only speaking for myself, I would not be able to support this, sir. And, you know, obviously, I think everybody wants to see that that building repurposed, you know, utilized to its full potential. But how everything is right now, I wouldn't be comfortable, and I'm just speaking for myself, to approve this variance. So we're going to continue the matter. Make sure you get a formal lease agreement between the owners and the church. And then just a detailed plan of kind of the parking layout. And then the sign. I really, and to my colleague's point, I really want to see the sign rectify before we move forward with anything. And then, as my other colleague said, if we can get just an update in terms of citations or violations. Because again, we're not being good neighbors and we're just adding on to the problem. I want to see all these things rectified before I feel comfortable moving forward with the vote in favor.
Okay, we'll certainly take care of that. The sign looks down. They must be referring to the banner that they had in the window, but I'll make sure all of that is removed right away.
Yeah, sir. And if you work with DPD, they can give you all the things that we talked about tonight and just, they're a great resource. So if you work with them, they'll help you, you know, they'll help you make sure that everything's more streamlined. So everything will be overall better for you and the neighbors as a whole. And again, my advice, you should reach out to the neighbors. And I think it'd just be in good standing, good favor for you and your application for the variance.
Of course. I know they do want to be good neighbors and I understand the parking is a nightmare over there. So I'll take care of those things right away, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Katrumbis, can you just tell us the next available hearing date, sir?
That would also be January 8. And this would be the last project on January 8.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Katrumbis. Any other comments for my colleagues before we move forward with the vote to continue?
Mr. Chairman, what is it that we're asking them to do for a parking plan? Are we really asking them to go to another piece of property and give us a breakdown of what their parking is? They're offering, they say on this that they're offering five spaces. Why can't we take their word for it? Are we actually seriously asking them to go to this church and tell us, what's your parking layout like? Do you have five spaces? Do you not have five spaces? What is it that we're looking for here? I'm a little confused. Mr. McCarthy, do you want to elaborate? Please?
Certainly, Mr. Callahan. I would love to elaborate.
Thank you.
Right now, the applicant may have vehicles that are larger than a standard parking space, nine by 18. In fact, there's evidence that they have a 22-foot-long van. They may have a trailer that they may need to park. We, I would love to see a layout of the church parking that identifies dimensions. Is there enough room to turn around a vehicle back there? Are the dimensions in line with the city? The parking area for the church, is it an adequate parking area? It's a backyard that was paved. So backyards that are paved are not necessarily designed from the initial get-go as parking areas and are compromised. So I think we should have a layout of the church parking that identifies dimensions and identifies spaces that would be allowed for the signage company to use. And we should have, in my opinion, an honest vetting of this signage company's typical way of doing business. Do they have vans that are oversized vans? And do they park them on the street? Would they park trailers on the street? My fear is that I go by there after this is, you know, approved and we see these oversized vehicles and trailers in two-hour parking. And we've granted that. So I'm worried about this going forward without some assurance that we will have parking dealt with correctly for a business like this. Because this business is not a standard business. They have vehicles and trailers. Thank you.
Okay. My recollection was that the petitioner said that any commercial vehicles are usually off-site anyways, not particularly in that space. Is that correct, Mr. Bavuso?
Yes, sir, it is. They do have a warehouse. They do the production and keep their vehicles.
We can condition that, no commercial vehicles on the street. I don't understand why we need a layout of another piece of property and their parking to satisfy parking for this particular property? It makes no sense. Why are we letting them, why are we making them, why are we making another piece of property provide us with a site plan on what their layout of it is? Normally, when we deal with these with parking with the city, we just get a letter from the city that says there's sufficient parking in the early garage. There's sufficient parking in the Roy Street Garage. There's sufficient parking in the Davidson Street Parking Lot. We take that without, you know, without asking them for, well, do you, can I get a layout of the, can I get a layout of what the parking's like in those areas? It just makes no sense to me. I'm sorry, I hate to disagree, but I don't see why we got to keep continuing. We're continuing another piece, another project for this? I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to disagree with the continuance. I don't think that this is necessary, but that the board can do whatever it wants. I think it's, I don't think it's necessary for this. But the board can do what they want. Thank you.
And sir, if I could offer one more piece of information?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bavuso.
The garages that they lease are at 181 Stedman Street in Lowell. So that's where they keep their commercial vehicles and do the manufacturing. I mean, their office on 604 Central closes at 6:00. It's basically the planning and design layout. So there's very little walk-in traffic. You know, most people will call them, they'll go to the site to look at what they want or they'll email them the picture and they produce the signage. So, but there will be no commercial parking at Central Street or in the church. There will be no commercial vehicles there overnight, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bavuso.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Brier, go ahead.
That's exactly the type of information that a detailed parking plan would offer this board, allowing us to make a more confident decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. All right. Again, we can continue the matter to January 8. What we're looking for the continuance, in terms of the documentation, is a formal lease agreement as recommended by DPD in their comments, the parking layout plan. And again, you know, I also, and my other colleague talked about this, we want to make sure that the current sign that's there is compliant with zoning before we move forward with anything. And then, I know there's some comments about, Mr. Katrumbis, about like any violations and all that kind of stuff, just for the next hearing on January 8. All right. If we have no more comments by my colleagues, we'll move forward with a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-38 for a variance for 604 Central Street to be continued to January 8.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second one by Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Beck.
I approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Abstain.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to January 8.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to January 8, 2024.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, Mr. Bavuso. We continue the matter to January 8. We'll see you then. And just for the public, there will be no other public notice. This is the public notice. This hearing has been continued to January 8. Thank you for coming out tonight, folks.
All right, thank you.
All right. Moving on, in our next item on our agenda, under new business, we have ZBA-2023-31. A petition is a variance. The applicant is Adina Braga. Property located at 380 Lawrence Street. The applicant has applied to the zoning vote of appeal seeking the variance approval to construct a 2,050-square-foot commercial building at 380 Lawrence Street. The subject property is located in the neighborhood Business Zoning District. The project requires variance approval per section 6.1 for the relief from the minimum off-seat parking requirements, the minimum drive aisle width requirement and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant this evening, who is also with me, the applicant, Adina Braga, in the audience. Also with us this evening is Philip Tebow, the architect for the project as well. As you had stated, Mr. Chairman, we're before you this evening to request a few variances regarding the parking for a property that's located at 380 Lawrence Street. You might better know it as the old Whipple Cafe, right on the corner of Lawrence Street and Rogers Street. The existing building, which is still there, pretty much in disrepair, definitely in need of being commercially redeveloped. And in this particular case, what we're proposing is to influx a significant investment from Ms. Braga into this neighborhood. She currently owns a property just at the top of Wamisett Street, 648 Central Street, which she currently has an insurance business. She's spent a good amount of time on that property, beautified it. She has a very good rapport with the city. And what we're looking to do here is transfer some of that good fortune for the city of Lowell onto this particular parcel. As we know, this parcel is tightly packed with the adjacent Joiner's Court, which is a public roadway measuring approximately 13 feet in width. And in doing this proposal, we tried to anticipate what we could do to make that situation better and still provide the necessary parking for this development to move forward. We're proposing a structure that measures 2,850 square feet. We've chosen to move that structure closer to the corner of the parcel, bring it right up to the sidewalk on Rogers Street as you're turning the corner. We feel that this eliminates two situations here. One, it eliminates the divide of the existing parking lot that currently is tough to maneuver. It also eliminates an entrance that is close to the intersection there on Rogers Street and allows us to solely access this property from Joiner's Court. We're proposing to construct 20 parking spaces in a newly, I would say, a newly created parking flow. The parking lot will also be able to handle the existing loading dock that is required and the dumpster pad showing both a dumpster and a recycling basin. In addition to the upgrades, we're also providing a stormwater management system that currently has been reviewed by the City of Lowell Stormwater Team. And that stormwater system will greatly increase the cleaning of the water for this particular lot, which is currently 100% paved with no stormwater on it as it exists. We feel as though that the variance requests are due to the hardship based off of the shape of the lot. We also feel there's a hardship due to the close proximity to a, I would say, an undersized right-of-way adjacent to the lot and also the close proximity to a five-intersection area. We're providing landscaping for the lot. I believe that the requirement for this type of development and this number of parking spaces is one space per 2,000 square feet of area would require one tree. We are proposing to provide a number of trees to the rear of the parcel adjacent to Five Joiner's Court, which is a property owned by Mr. Silver. That way, we will provide him a buffering between the parking lot that doesn't exist now and also the dumpster and loading area. We are also providing a handicap space and some outdoor seating that would be located right along Lawrence Street. We also believe that in this particular instance, along Lawrence Street. We also believe that in this particular instance, we are asking for 20 spaces where 30 spaces are required. The use is being proposed is a breakfast and lunch restaurant on the first floor with office on the second floor. The City of Lowell allows you to provide what we call a shared parking calculation. We provided that in the narrative to the board that outlines the maximum number of spaces. Utilizing the shared parking calculations would be 30 spaces for this particular lot. And again, we are proposing 20 spaces. In addition, as I had stated before, and I do have a couple of handouts should the board wish to review them, Ms. Braga's other commercial property is exactly 400 feet from this particular property, which falls in line with the ability to utilize those spaces. And her anticipation would be that most of the employee parking would be handled on her existing lot. I'd love to come to the board and approach you with some building drawings for the board to take a look at, as well as some copies of existing photographs?
Yeah, go ahead, Mussalani. Go ahead. Thank you, Mussalani. Thank you, Mussalani.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you can see that I handed out there, the structure that we're looking to do, it's a two-story structure on the parcel. It's going to be sent, you know, it's going to be a curved front along Lawrence Street, making its way around towards Rogers Street, two stories. And again, we're looking to provide what we believe is sufficient parking with the 20 spaces on site. Plus, again, Ms. Braga does own an additional property up at the top of Wamisett Street at 648 Central Street that she is willing to utilize for employee parking for this particular parcel as well. A couple of items, just to verify, there are four additional public spots that are at the Dubner Park, which is less than 150 feet away. I guess not everybody can use the spaces, but they are public. And at times of day, I would assume that they would be available for use. We are in receipt of a memorandum provided by the planning staff that outlines a couple of items that I just wanted to quickly review with the board. One of the first items is item number five. I believe Mr. Dillon did point out that we are required for 30 spaces and that we're proposing 21, but that is not correct. We are actually only proposing 20 spaces on this particular parcel, requiring a 10-space relief for the variance request. We believe that the justification for this particular variance, again, is due to the fact that the shape of that lot, the fact that that lot's been, you know, in existence and completely paved with really no rhyme or reason to a parking area over there, and that that justification would be based off of that shape and the, you know, unavailable parking on the roadway that's surrounding this particular property and the intersection that we abut so closely. One of the other points that I wanted to point out was that the transportation engineer does state that the Joiners Court is only 12 feet wide. We've surveyed it. I have it at 13 feet. But we are adding some additional pavement and moving the curb back. So we're widening that entrance to the roadway to 17 feet for greater access for emergency vehicles. Then we're allowing some painted islands to be put in there to also keep the parking from the restaurant and the office getting too close to Joiners Court. We added about three and four feet islands on the side there, coming down Joiners Court. So we get a total of 17 feet there for a width. Let's see. I just wanted to mention again, remember, this particular restaurant use is only going to be for breakfast and lunch. There will be no dinnertime use of this structure for the restaurant space. We also had an opportunity to review the comments from the engineering department. They're all, I would say, pretty specific, and we would agree with each one of those recommendations from the engineering department. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mussalani. We'll open up the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Hi again. My name is Cheryl Allen Calavertinos. I also own the property at 270 and 300 Lawrence Street. I also have one of the only parking lots, you know, that's 380 Lawrence Street, so it's like four units down. I only, I have the only parking lot there, and people are parked there now. But parking is essential. I don't think there should be any mercy on parking. The code calls for minimum parking. They have two big violations that affects the street, minimum off-street parking requirements, and minimum drive alleys with requirements. This, to me, says that they don't have enough parking to operate without a negative effect on the neighborhood. It would create a lot of congestion. With these new projects moving forward, there is already not enough parking. Parking is also tight on the street. Currently, she abuts the business I own on 11 and 19 Mill Street. And in the winter, they have a lot of businesses in that unit, you know, and that have run out of that unit. Plus, they have like school during the mornings and school at night. And they're always parking in my lot. And I have to be the bad person and tow the cars because they're parked in my lot. But, and in the wintertime, they push all the snow to my corner because they need all their parking. And I have, you know, extra few spaces. So they drag their snow across and put it all in my corner. I have pictures from last year. This has been going on for a while. So I am opposed to this unit, to this being done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing none, the portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lewis. I live at 13 Merrill Street, in back of the Whipple, the residence that they're talking about right now. Back in the day, the Whipple, on any given day or weekend, they'd have 50 to 60 cars parked there. I lived there all my life. They had no problem coming from bone detresses. It was always, there was no problems. I was here before with the last people that wanted to put an 18-tenement block in there. They didn't talk about Junior's Court, which is 13 feet wide. Fire trucks couldn't get down there years ago. They're willing to go back another four feet, make it easier for Junior's Court, which is only like five houses on that street. I live right behind it, behind the Silvers. I think it's a great idea, just looking at the plans that I see, coming down Wamisett Street and looking at what I've been seeing for the last few years, and it caught fire not long ago, and it's even worse now than it ever. It's an eyesore. Looking at these plans, a curved place like that, alls I could say is when you're coming down the street, I'd say, wow. We need something like that. We didn't need a three-story. We need something, breakfast places, beautiful. And it's going to be a business. It's like a Marmaris all over again, like Casselli's, Turcot's Liquor Store, O'Connor Hill. They're all small places. This is a small place. It's not big. As far as the parking, I don't see any problems with the parking. There's plenty of parking. Because when the Whipple was running, it was packed on any given day, especially on holidays. I can contest that because I used to go there. But again, I think it's great for the city to see something like this when you're coming down Wamisett Hill and you're not looking at an eyesore. I think it's a great idea. And I would have proved this in a heartbeat. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Mandonka. I live at 4 Rogers Street, which is right behind the Whipple. And I've lived there most of my adult life, except for the eight years I served in the Army. And the Whipple was interesting, and I, I'm not going to lie, I used to go in there and have a few beers myself, and the food was okay. But I did also witness people getting beat up outside, drug addicts, you know, overdosing outside. I've had to call Lowell PD numerous times because there were people trying to vandalize the property and all this stuff. So this whole idea of, you know, this breakfast, lunch place, it just brings a little bit of class to the area that looks like a dump right now. And as far as the owners, I've never met the owners until the day that lightning struck the tree, the tree right there behind the Whipple, and the tree fell on my parents' house. And the owners, they did what good neighbors and community does, and they helped us out, you know. They helped put us our conduit back on the house so that we could get our electricity back and everything else. So, you know, I really like this project, and I think it's a, I think it's a good deal.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dominic Ndongo, and I live on 9 Clark's Court. That's behind the, behind the lot that has a plan. And to be honest with you, when I was coming here, I was coming to oppose. But when I saw the plans, I think, I don't know whether he's the owner or something, but I thought it was a good idea. First of all, is because it's breakfast and lunch. And it's not like every day. It's not like, I thought he said it's about, I don't know, I don't remember exactly how many days, but to the one who was opposing, I still believe, we still have a lot of problem there. And this is just for you guys as a planning, that we have a problem with the parking there on Lawrence Street. But according to the way they explained that it's not going to be overflowing into Lawrence Street, I'm in favor of the plan. Thank you.
Then thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Good evening, ma'am.
I think this would be great for our neighbor, for the neighborhood. It's just two great people that give back to this community. I see how she takes care of her property, and we need that. We need neighbors like this. Okay? And elderly people around the neighborhood are all excited about this. They can walk, too. So parking is not going to be an issue compared with the Whipple used to be. There's so many people there. But it's just breakfast and lunch. And I think the neighbors and elderly people deserve that in our neighborhood. We need things like that back in our neighborhood. I think we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. All right, seeing none, the public hearings close. We're going to open questions, comments to the board. Mussalani, did you want to comment before we open it to the board from the neighbors and the butters here?
I would like to say, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and taking the time to, you know, let them be heard. And, you know, I'd welcome the questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mussalani. All right. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, what a nice, what a nice change to what we have currently to this rendering. A lot of comments from the city, and I'm so glad that we have great staff to provide this kind of overview. And I'm not sure I'm hearing them being completely addressed, but I'd like to start, of course, with parking. So what led you to roughly 104 seating breakfast-lunch establishment with three suites above? So as an architect, I would typically, you know, make it fit versus, you know, try to get a larger restaurant and smaller parking, and then come before the zoning board, right? And I'm sure the planning board as well. But is it possible to have a smaller establishment with maybe not 104 parking, seating, 72 interior, 32 exterior, maybe it's, you know, 60 interior and 20 exterior? And maybe, why is it, why is it so big? Because it's certainly a problem for parking.
Yeah, I mean, if I can respond, Mr. McCarthy, I mean, we, and I'm sure you're aware, I've placed a number of buildings on this particular lot with a number of different clients. The shape of this lot is fairly unique, where you're limited where you can put your parking and your building. In this particular case, where we've located that building and requiring the parking being a nine or a 10-foot width on an additional space, you would start really reducing the building volume, and you'd really only gain one additional space. And in this particular case with this building, knowing that we're only doing lunch and breakfast, the profit margins on those two types of meals are not anywhere near the profit margin you can reach on a dinner-type establishment. And in this particular case, we feel as though it was an economic need to provide that number of seats with this type of structure. And by reducing this structure and limiting what they could bring in for, you know, financial gain for breakfast and lunch, you really would only pick up one additional spot before the building would become unusable.
Well, maybe.
Okay.
But I was suggesting in my head, changing the dimension of the building by, you know, nine feet or whatever, maybe eight or nine feet, and that would provide up to four parking spaces. But that's not, I was more-
You are a better engineer than me. How do you see that, sir?
You know what? We're not getting into the weeds here, please.
All right. Sorry.
But I was really asking more specifically as to why the building needs to be 2,850 square feet. Is that right?
That is correct. Yep.
Versus 2,000 square feet.
And again, so as far as my layout of this particular site, as you can see, if we were to shave space from that building, we would shave it obviously from those four additional spaces that are right in front of it, where the handicap space is. We would go closer to Rogers Street. It would narrow that building down slightly. But you would only be able to pick up parking spaces right adjacent to where that outdoor parking area is. Due to the fact of that shape of that lot, you could only slide one additional space over there. I don't see being able to pick up four. And believe me, I've tried a number of configurations on this lot to maximize the number of spaces I could get. And this was what fit economically with the client. It looks good.
It looks good.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And so that's what's driving it, then? You're saying it's a site-driven kind of equation where you've got this piece of site that's really not conducive to parking efficiently anyway, and it would be lovely for a building, and you've got the rest of it making some efficiency with the parking layout? Is that right?
Philip Tivo from Philip Tivo Architects in Drakehead. That's primarily correct. The shape of the building is actually determined essentially by the parking requirement, parking that's permissible there. So trying to, we looked at a number of different scenarios where you could, you know, squeeze down the building a little bit, as Mr. Lania indicated. The area that we have outdoor seating is really unusable for parking because of its location on essentially a corner between parking spaces. And as far as the number of parking spaces, the number of dining seats, I suppose the higher number that you mentioned would only be in good weather for a majority of the time, even in mornings. I would think that you're really only having people eat interior. So you may have some dining in the exterior in the summer for lunch, or on the weekends for lunch type of thing. But primarily, those are spaces that are certainly weather-dependent.
Okay. Thank you. The second floor needed to be added to this to add more value? I mean, we, it seems like it doesn't come at a penalty because you're saying there's some shared spaces there on the second floor, the occupancy of the office versus the occupancy of the restaurant. So we don't really have a penalty to provide additional rentable area on the second floor to the parking equation? Is that correct?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
So we have a second floor of three suites that comprise maybe, I don't know, 1,000 square feet or something?
800, 800.
800, okay, thank you. But they don't come with a penalty to the parking because they have an overlap or a shared component. So whether that's there or not, it doesn't change the parking requirement because of the restaurant, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanna be clear on that. Okay. And then, snow storage. What are you doing to alleviate?
In this particular sense, because we are so small in that particular area, there is a small area to the rear that we would be able to provide some snow storage for, let's say, a smaller snow vent, inch, two, maybe three at the max. But anything larger than that would require the owner to have the snow removed.
So it would be removed?
Absolutely.
So that's the plan? Okay. And then the last one I have is your idea of 17 feet here.
Yes, sir.
So we have these paved surfaces that are striped, that would produce something like an island, but it would just be a paved surface that's striped.
That is correct.
That would allow for vehicles, emergency vehicles, to drive over them in the event that they needed to, and to alleviate the problem with the 12 feet and give them space to maneuver.
Absolutely.
The transportation engineers see this? Because that's really strong.
She commented that, yeah, I mean, her comments were, there is no justification provided for the reduction in parking spaces, although I do believe I provided justification. There is not a lot on-street parking in the area, and Joiners Court is only 12 feet wide. And again, I'm not sure, I thought I had a dimension on the plan that said 13 feet as existing, and then with the additional three- and four-foot wide aisles, that would increase that to 17 feet. I did go over the relocation of the curb cut on Lawrence Street, turning into Joiners with the engineering department, and they agreed that I would be able to increase that to a 17-foot width. So I'm not 100% sure. Maybe she wasn't, maybe it wasn't her day, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's a striking comment from her. Okay. And then back to the comments from the staff. The staff is suggesting a landscape plan.
Yeah, so I did provide trees shown. You can see that I did provide, I believe what the requirement is, is listed out here, one live shade tree for every 2,000 square feet of parking area. We have approximately 8,000 square feet of parking area. So I provided four street trees along the parking front that is adjacent to Lawrence Street. You can see the four symbols, starting at the outdoor parking, I mean, I'm sorry, the outdoor seating area, moving towards Joiners Court. And then in addition to that, beyond just what was required under the landscaping, the owners and myself felt it would be prudent for us to provide a buffer zone to the adjacent rear neighbor on Joiners Court, Mr. Silva, and we've provided abreviated trees along that rear line, and I wanna say 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So I believe we've provided not only what's required, but a much greater buffer than is needed.
So you've updated your plans since they were submitted, and that's why we have comments that don't match the plan?
These are the same plans. I don't have any revision dates on my plan. I mean, you have a site plan in front of you, yes?
You're right. And I just quickly did the math, 20 spaces times 40 square feet per space, as a general rule of thumb, is 8,000, that's four shade trees. And so you have that.
Yes, sir.
So that's kind of why I'm a little bit surprised that they're making a comment here, provide a landscape plan showing four shade trees, which you did.
Yes, I did, sir.
Okay, that aside, all right. Is there someplace nearby we could have access to the other 10 spaces as a lease?
So my client, the owner, does have the opportunity to obtain some additional lease spaces. I believe it's potentially five or six, but I did not have that agreement this evening, so I didn't wanna represent that to the board. But the owner could come up and speak to that. We are fairly confident that that particular lease agreement is, I don't, nothing's set in stone, but 90% achievable. That would give us at least an additional five and potentially six spaces.
I am happy to have all these comments from staff, but I'm a little bit nervous about staff making statements like they are in the comments, and us basically, or myself, suggesting that we could just maybe condition a few things and improve it, which I would love to do if I could.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if another continuance would be-
Listen to the conditions.
Another sufferable continuance, but I would love to see the parking agreement.
Yep.
I would love to see the staff and yourself have some communication about the landscaping plan and the join-
Joiners Court.
Joiners Court on dimension. And maybe if we could have emergency vehicles weigh in on this, that it would be accessible and reasonable to provide services to this site with a dimension of 17 feet. Just to be clear, because I really think this is a great project, and I do think it's the right size for this lot. And I'd like to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure inquiry, Mr. Lania. When was a sign posted on the property? Because I'm scratching my head now. I saw it yesterday. I-
I believe it was-
Live in the area, I'm somewhat in the area. I've gone by it several times over the past few weeks, and I do not recall seeing it at least last week on the posted. I did see it yesterday, though, I will say that.
I have photographs. I believe it was posted 12 days ago.
Okay. All right. I mean, I'll take your word for it, but I'm just trying, don't remember. I've kinda been looking for it a little bit, too, because it is in my, it's not my neighborhood, but it's on my travels home.
On your path.
So, and I am very familiar with the Whipple, so. My uncle worked there many, many years, so.
November 3rd.
November 3rd? Okay. Okay. It was posted at the same spot? Okay, all right, I'll take, yeah, that's fine. Scratching my head, thinking, I couldn't recall seeing it last week, but maybe I missed it, because it's right out there out in front.
Maybe it blends in with that front window cover.
I, maybe, I guess so, I don't know, but, okay.
It was the easiest sign I've ever put up, I gotta be honest with you.
Yep. Okay, well, that's been cleared out. So I think it's, I think it's a great project, great reuse. My recollection, previously of a prior project that was scheduled, I believe you were involved with that, Mr. Lania. Didn't come in front of us, it came in front of planning, and I don't know if it, I'm not gonna speculate on what would've happened if it came before us, but I'll-
I think I have.
It wasn't, it was very eye-opening, I'll say that. It was an eye-opening experience, and this is, I believe, much better, much better. It's, fits the neighborhood. I appreciate that, and understand that parking's always been an issue there anyways with the I mean, people parking on, they had people parking on Joiners Court, pretty much, because the curbs have, there's no curbs anywhere. So it's, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a good repurpose of this. Sad to see the old Whipple go. Surprising that the billboards are gone.
I know.
Of all things, I always thought those billboards would never go anywhere. Such a big moneymaker, such a moneymaker. Clear Channel would be like-
Yeah, Clear.
Clear Channel must be crying in their, crying in their proverbial beers or something for that, but, and I'm very surprised about the tree that got hit by lightning. I didn't, I saw the tree, I'd be like, oh, they're just tearing it down to like, get it ready, but it got hit by lightning?
Oh, yeah.
Jeez. Wow, that property, man, just, so. Anyways, I think the project will work. I do appreciate the overviews. You are, like you said, you're expanding Joiners Court by an additional four feet, putting in curbs, which it never had before. So that's gonna prevent people from, obviously, the old Whipple just driving up into the, driving up into the parking lot and just finding a spot, or just fitting yourself in somewhere. So the use with the restaurant for breakfast and lunch only, I mean, that's great. I'm hoping, like the Whipple, the breakfast on Thanksgiving morning?
That's it.
We'll see how that, if this gets approval, see how that works out next week.
After you do your 5K, right?
Yeah, yep, exactly. I guess, and the office space upstairs, I mean, that's rental, is that being used by the restaurant, or is that gonna be?
No, that would be rental space, yeah, for additional income to offset the cost. We were estimating about a $2 million building.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, breakfast, you know, the profit margins on a breakfast, brunch, lunch, brunch places, you're cutting it close, so, but that would be certainly offsetting it. But I think, yes, again, I think this is a great, great project, and I would fully support it, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I think we took a dive into this, and you answered a lot of the questions regarding the comments that DPD and engineering and economic development director had. So I don't need to beat a dead horse here. I think this corner needs something. I think this project is a vast improvement on what it is now. Unlike Member Callahan, I had never gone to the Whipple before, so I don't know what it was over there prior. So, yeah, I mean, the parking in this area is a concern. I think you tried to address it as best as possible, not only the spaces, but, you know, the street that tended to get overcrowded, from what I hear on Thanksgiving morning. You know, I guess we have a couple of choices. We could leave it like it is now, which doesn't do the neighborhood any good. Like one of the people that spoke, you know, a breakfast and brunch place in that area will get a lot of foot traffic.
Absolutely.
Right? So, yes, there is parking concern as far as many spaces, but I think a lot of the patrons will be traveling on foot, you know, at least in the nice weather. And, you know, there is a lot of residents over there, so I think, you know, this is a positive thing for that part of the neighborhood, and I support this 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that this is, it is definitely an improvement to that area. I've never been to the Whipple. I've never had any fights in the Whipple, but I would say that it's, this in itself is a vast improvement to what's there now. And, I mean, it's, again, it's the city of Lowell, you know? There is parking issues everywhere, but it's good to see that this project is mindful, that they are trying to eliminate as much as they can to get, you know, as few variances as necessary. So I think the neighbors would like this. I think the city would like it, you know? It would add to the revenue for the city. And the fact that it seems like great care is taken on this project to ensure that, you know, there is minimal negative effect in that area, which sorely needs, you know, a vast improvement, so. And I do appreciate your comments about the landscaping plan, because that was one of my concerns initially, and the traffic engineer's response. So I don't know if we need to do anything in a sense of getting additional information, maybe from the city. But I think this project is gonna suit very well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's absolutely no doubt that this is an improvement to the site. Goes a long way to revitalizing that area. And the neighbors have spoken, and spoken loudly, they favor the revitalization over the potential for any parking sacrifice. That speaks volumes. The gentleman that rose first to talk about the Whipple in its heyday, if you could deal with the parking then, this would be a piece of cake. You know, it truly will. To the one abutter who spoke in opposition, I have to believe, I have to believe there's a remedy to be a good neighbor and satisfy the concerns of illegal parking and snow removal. So I think it would be, and you will, you've always represented yourself as this. I think a conversation with that abutter would go a long way as to getting another individual on your side on this one. But I wish the people could see this at home. This, well, I don't know if they can or not, but this, I mean, I don't know how you can't favor this. It's kind of a wild project, and what's been sitting there all this time. Pork chops on Thursday. That's the only thing we're gonna lose. I'm in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Mr. Lania, to your effects, sir, always prepared, always ready. I always appreciate your documentation. You're very thorough detail.
Thank you, sir.
Very well spoken. Again, I think, to me, this is a great repurpose. Again, um, I think, to me, this is a great repurpose, uh, of the site, um, you know, I don't have any stories of the Whipple either, you know, unfortunately, but, um, I think, you know, this is probably a less of an intrusive use than what it was previously, so I think it's a good addition, um, to the neighborhood, but to the city as a whole, and, and again, a lot of the neighbors came out tonight to support it, so I think it, it speaks great volume of, of the owners and the business, um, you know, you, you do, uh, you take care of your business, you, you treat your neighbors, the people around you, uh, right, and, um, so kudos to you, so, congrats. You know, I, I'll support this as well. I think we do have, um, a few conditions, um... Mr. McCarthy, did you wanna talk a little bit about...
Absolutely.
Yeah, the conditions.
Well, I think, um, to, to address the, uh, concerns of staff, um, I think I'd like to see a condition that we work with DPD to provide four shade trees, so your plan does show a symbol that represents a tree, but it's not called out.
Yep.
Uh, so four shade trees, minimum two and a half inch caliper along Lawrence Street, that's one condition, and I think we should have a condition maybe that, that, uh, the applicant will, uh, um, provide, uh, snow, uh, removal to be stored off-site, um, and then, uh, I think to address the parking, if we could have a six-month administrative review to determine if we need to supplement additional parking off-site.
Excellent, I like that. We'd be in favor of that, Mr. McCarthy. What is it? Absolutely. Actually, the gentleman that's gonna lease us our spaces is sitting right here in the front row, uh, and he could confirm that we are going to be able to lease additional spaces.
And, and is that five spaces? Is that, what was the number? Six? So maybe, um, a condition that the applicant provide, um, a document stating that there will be six leased spaces off-site?
Absolutely.
Um, is there an address that we could put on that?
23 Richmond Street.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Ms. Lania, you agree to all those conditions that we just talked about?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, if there's no further comments by my colleagues, we'll move forward with a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-31 variance at 380 Lawrence Street, um, to, um, provide a minimum off-street parking requirement, minimum drive aisle with requirement, um, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance with the three previously mentioned, or, uh, conditions.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second round, Mr. Huby, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Um, just real quick before the roll call, I wanna confirm, do you guys still want to do the administrative review, even with the additional parking spaces? No? Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell.
Yep. Uh, Chairman Peck.
Uh, approved conditions.
Uh, Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved with conditions.
Member Huby.
Approve.
Alright, Ms. Lania, you've been approved.
Excellent.
Wish you best of luck.
I appreciate it.
Uh, thank, thank you, folks, we do have another item on the agenda, uh, thank you for coming out tonight, folks, thank you. Have a good night, folks, thank you. Alright, moving on to our next scheduled item on our agenda, under new business, we have ZBA dash 2023 dash 39 petition as a variance, the applicant is Citywide Properties LLC, the property is located at 21 Marginal Street, um, Citywide Properties LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance approval to construct a three-story additional, addition and create three new residential unit at 21 Marginal Street, the subject property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district, the project requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, rear yard setback, and usable open space for dwelling unit requirements, the project also requires relief under section 6.1 for the off-street parking requirements, and any other which required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Uh, good evening, Councilor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, and thank you. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant and owner of the property, Citywide Properties LLC, and with us tonight is Jason Mello of Citywide Properties, and, uh, we have Matt Hammer of Landplex Engineering as well. Uh, as the chairman mentioned, this application involves request for variance pursuant to 5.1 and 6.1.4 of the city zoning ordinance, the lot, uh, the property is located at 20 Marginal, 21 Marginal Street, consists of 15,523 square feet of land, uh, and is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. We've provided the board with a site plan, which includes a zoning chart, landscaping, we've also provided the, uh, floor plans, elevations, and a rendering of the completed building. As you all have probably know from visiting the site, Marginal Street is a mix of multifamily with, uh, some single-family homes scattered about, uh, there are mostly multifamily properties in close proximity to this particular property at 21 Marginal Street. At the end of the street, we have the, uh, private dormitories, uh, that, uh, houses students from UMass Lowell, and there's a, a row of fairly new, maybe 15, 20 years now of single-family homes at the end of this property, as, uh, end of Marginal Street as well. The property can, currently consists of two buildings, there's the existing three-family, which was built somewhere around 1900, that, uh, building consists of two one-bedroom apartments and one studio apartment. The other building on the property was built in the eighties and consists of, uh, six two-bedroom units. And as, as chairman mentioned, we're before you tonight requesting, uh, dimensional relief pursuant to 5.1 for lot area per dwelling unit, usable open space per dwelling unit, and rear yard setback. Uh, we're also seeking a variance pursuant to 6.1.4 for lack of off-street parking. With regard to the dimensional relief for, uh, lot area, usable open space, and the si, and the rear yard setback, those are all currently non-conforming, uh, we are proposing to expand this non-conforming use of the property, and thereby, we're increasing those, uh, those non-conforming dimensional setbacks right now, um, with our proposal. With regard to the, uh, rear yard setback, uh, what would be considered the rear yard of this property is not used in any manner whatsoever right now, uh, which is where we're proposing to put the addition. Uh, the property also abuts the railroad at the rear of the property, so there's a fence at the rear of the property, there's the railroad, there's an embankment heading down to the, to the rail line, and then on the other side of the railroad property is the UMass Lowell South Campus Buildings. Uh, so, although we, uh, the, the structure is proposed to be 3.6 feet from the rear of the lot line, it's really not encroaching on any other residential structure to the rear of the property, it's railroad property, the, the trains aren't whizzing by the, you know, 3.6 feet from the, from the proposed structure, the, the actual rail line is about 30 feet from the back of the property. In terms of the pro, parking that we're seeking, so, we're able to provide 21, currently 21 off-street parking spaces, the addition of the, of the three units requires that we provide a total of 24 parking spaces, there'll be 12 units, two parking spaces per unit. We feel that the need for a relief of the three off-street parking ba, spaces is mitigated to some degree by the fact that the applicant is, uh, the property's property manager, they, they self-manage their properties, uh, and so, for example, as I said, the, the existing three-family only has three bedrooms in it, there are only three cars associated with that property, so we feel that we can manage the parking well enough, so there's no negative impact to the, uh, property or the neighborhood in general. But, you know, I'd suggest that the property is currently underparked right now. Uh, we have also received and reviewed the staff comments, uh, so initially, the staff points out that this, this application came in as a special permit through your board, the, the zoning board, but that is not the case, we actually need site plan review here, and because there's site plan review, the special permit will be issued by the planning board, not the zoning board, so we will be applying for the, uh, site plan review and a special permit pursuant to 4.1, uh, 4.5.2 of the ordinance. Comment number three reiterates that the, um, that we're, we're seek, we're adding three units for a total of 12 units, there, there must've been a typo in my narrative that mentioned 13 units at one point, but, just to be clear, we're proposing three additional units, there are existing nine units, so a total of 12 units. Comment number four, our reviews, the dimensional relief requested, uh, Peter did a great job of, of laying that out in his comments with a chart, I, I just went through that, but, the, as I said, the existing dimensions are non-conforming, we're expanding those a little bit, and so we're requesting the relief. Uh, comment number five speaks to the, um, to the proposed structure being 3.6 feet off the rear property line, I covered that, again, we're about 30 feet from the rear of the structure to the actual rail line. Comment number speak, uh, I'm sorry, comment number six speaks specifically to usable open space per dwelling unit, we currently have none, we cannot create any with this proposal, but, I think that's mitigated by the fact that any tenant that's living there knows that when they come into the property and they, you know, prospective tenant will obviously see it, if usable open space is important to a tenant, they'll probably look elsewhere, uh, but we have no usable open space. Comment number seven, Peter revised that this morning, I believe, uh, so, there was a question as to whether or not we needed a variance for the number of stories in the TMF zoning district, you can go up to three stories, we're proposing three stories, we don't need any additional relief relative to that. Comment number eight speaks to the off-street, off-street parking, again, again, I, I discussed that, we're very confident, the property, the owner and property manager are very confident that they can manage that parking without any negative impacts to the neighborhood or the property. And I'd also point out that, you know, the, the property's owned by Citywide Properties, which is the Mello family, they own quite a bit of property in the city of Lowell, they have an excellent reputation with the building department and the other departments within the city, all of their properties are very well cared for, and, you know, some of you members that have been on the board for a few years may recall a project that we were before you on, the Bridge Street property, that was a similar property in the sense that we were expanding a non-conforming use from a four, four unit to a six unit. That project was recently completed, it resulted in the complete rehab of that building inside and outside, um, the site work was, was completely done, all the landscaping, it's a beautiful project, it's, it's completely tenanted now, I would expect nothing different with this project, uh, by the Mello family, they, they run an excellent business and they're very conscientious. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt, Matt can review the plans with the board.
Good evening, uh, members of the zoning board, uh, for the record, Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, uh, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm gonna... ...review the existing conditions on the property. Marginal Street's here, here's the existing, uh, three-story building, there's parking in here, there's a batuminous concrete drive in the rear, there's a, a small stockade area, uh, for a dumpster that's located back here, this is the, uh, rear of the property of this existing building here, which is where the proposed addition's going to be, and this garage here is gonna be removed, and here's an existing, uh, concrete, uh, batuminous area here, so the curb cuts are gonna remain the same, the pavement's gonna remain the same, and this garage is gonna be removed to be replaced with, uh, new parking spaces, which I will review. Oh, and again, this is the railroad track area, I also wanted to note, um, that the railroad track is quite a distance away, but it's also down in grade, um, approximately 10 feet or more. So this is the proposed addition here, it's 28 feet in depth, 35 feet in width, the, um, the existing section in the rear is going to be removed and replaced with this, uh, new, uh, addition, that'll be three stories in height, and I'll show you the architectural elevations pertaining to that. There's an existing tree that's gonna be located where the proposed addition is to be located, uh, we're gonna be proposing, obviously, to remove that tree, and we're proposing to do three shade trees along the roadway to replace that one tree that's being removed. And where this garage is here, there's gonna be two addition, two parking spaces that were replaced, the two parking spaces that were there with the garage, but I can say there would be some added, um, uh, open space area, not meeting the definition of open space, but just green space, and that'll also be utilized for landscaping and snow storage. The, uh, this paved area will all remain the same, along here and over to here, and as I mentioned, there would be the, the two additional spaces, or replaced spaces to where the dilapidated garage is currently located, and I'll walk through the architectural elevations. So this is the front elevation of that building, here, and this is the rear elevation, here, the three stories. This is looking at it from the right side, so this is the addition here, going off of the existing building here. And this is the opposite side showing the addition off the rear. This is the, uh, floor plan, uh, for the, the first level, showing the two bedrooms, the living room, kitchen area, and the unit here for the first floor, the main level. And it's the same si, similar progression to the second and the third story. And I can, uh, put it back to, uh, Attorney Geary.
Thank you, Matt. So, this is a very unique property in this neighborhood with the, uh, two structures on the relatively large lot, we believe that the requested relief can be, uh, granted without any detriment to the public good, this is an opportunity to add additional housing units to the city's housing stock in a respectful way to the neighborhood. Uh, the additional three units would, would involve a complete exterior renovation of the building of the existing three-family, including new siding, windows, uh, roof, um, it would also involve the installation of a fire suppression system into this building, which would be a great benefit to the neighborhood, considering that this is a densely settled neighborhood. We also believe that relief can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning for this district, this is a multifamily zoning district, we're proposing multifamily housing here. So with that, um, actually, I have a, um, I have a, uh, letter from a, a butter, that, so this is the abutter at 27 Marginal Street, which is the, if you're facing this property, the, the single-family property to the left.
Thank you.
Uh, she was not able to, to come, Ms. Newe was not able to come tonight, but she is in support of the project and, uh, asked us to present that letter to the board. So with that, I'll turn, um, back to the board, if you have any questions or concerns, we're happy to try to address whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Now, we'll open up the hearing to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
to speak in opposition? Go ahead, ma'am. Do you want us to come to the lectern and just your name and address?
27?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, what did the letter say?
Um, it says, "Dear Chairman Van Pegg, Zoning Board Appeals, I'm writing to inform you that I reside at 27 Marginal Street, and I have reviewed the proposed additions to a property adjacent to my property at 21 Marginal Street. I have no concerns relating to Mr. Mello's addition to his property. Mr. Mello has been a very good neighbor since I've lived here. I support Mr. Mello's application. Thank you. Sincerely, support new dated for November 10th, 2023." And they list their phone number.
Okay. I was just curious. It was well-written. I didn't, uh, from my, my relationship with them, I didn't, that didn't sound like their wording or language. Um, but that's good. So I was concerned about specifically my neighbors who, who, a lot of them don't speak English, um, about the fact that it'd be abutting their property. Um, the street is approximately 50/50, private, single families versus multifamilies. I'm one of the very few people that have a single-family house. I'm at 33 Marginal, so I'm two houses down. Um, and I do oppose this. Um, it's, it is a neighborhood that does have a lot of two and three-family homes. Um, that is consistent with the tone of the neighborhood. The building to the right with the six units built in the eighties, to me, is the eyesore already. It sticks out from the rest of the neighborhood. It's this eighties brick building. It's all these Victorian houses. Um, the blue house to the left, which is this property, um, is the Coffey family. They used to be the house that owned most of the land where these single families are where I live. Um, and I enjoyed when I moved into the neighborhood, looking up the, the history of the property. One of the reasons I bought this place, I couldn't afford much, single person, that I live by myself, um, was the trees to the railroad behind the property. Um, they're very, very mature trees, maples, ash, oak. There's a lot of wildlife back there, and it's, it's what sold me to the property, what little bit I could afford on my own in a safe neighborhood, sunny, some room for my dog outside. It's a great spot, and those mature trees have a lot to do with light and sound buffering from the railroad, from the river, from the boulevard, and from UMass. Um, UMass not too long ago had reconstructed the back of that, um, McGovern Hall, I think it is. And when they did that, they redid the parking lot, they tore down a lot of trees, and the new parking lot has new lighting that literally looks like headlights shining into my home. In the summertime, it's acceptable. The trees block, literally from my backyard, people have, people that I've gone to school with at UMass have come over, and they're in doubt, they're in disbelief that that's UMass right there, that we went to school at, um, because the trees are so dense. In the nice weather, you can't even see the campus. I didn't know for the first couple of years I lived there that there was a smokestack back there, because the trees beautifully buffered the light and the noise and allowed wildlife. Um, I'm definitely opposed to the removal of any trees along that property. A couple of years ago, the railroad clear-cut dozens and dozens and dozens of trees, and I cried because now I just see all the, the glaring lights from the parking lot, the glaring lights from the parking garage over there. Um, I just feel like we cannot afford to lose a single tree on that street. Uh, last summer, the last remaining home that had a tree in the front yard cut it down for maintenance, for, for ease of maintenance, and I wanted to cry. I, I don't want to see this neighborhood turn into, no offense, a back central where it's so congested that people have to fight tooth and nail for parking. Um, three units is acceptable. I know the people that live there. Um, it's true, they don't have large families, they don't have a lot of cars, and that's why it fits in with the neighborhood right now. Um, there is just enough parking on the street for the amount of people we have without anyone fighting. So even when my residential sticker sign in front of my house has expired, nobody parks in my spot because we all get along and we're all respectful, and there's just enough spots that no one has to do that. Um, I am concerned about the traffic, the cars. Um, I think there's a statement saying that most units don't have more than one car, but that would certainly change with this development. Most people, if it's more than one bedroom, have more than one resident, more than one car, and there's not gonna be ample parking for two spaces per unit, and there's just not enough room on the street. It's tight enough as it is. I know from when fire trucks try to come through, it's really, really tight. It's not back central yet, but if we keep developing like this, it's about to be. Um, so I highly oppose this. My neighbor is on the other side, one of the very few single-family homes. They're very elderly. They have caretakers that come all the time to the property. They need to be able to pull up in front. Um, I just think we can't afford to have a, another car in the lot. I definitely oppose removing any of the very mature trees back there that I love so dearly. We had a, a fire a few months ago down in the tracks, and I cried that one of the trees caught on fire and had to be taken down. Um, it's just, it's a big deal to me. It's my home, and I can't afford to move anywhere else. I can't afford a nicer home in a quieter wooded neighborhood. Um, where it's too small of a street, I, I drive by in Wilder, and I want to be one of the homes that has the trees that they've recently planted along the road. I would love that, but we don't have the space. And I just really oppose this. I don't see the purpose of it other than greed and making money. Um, it doesn't seem to have anything to do with, you know, wanting to improve your, your own family's home or having a safer place for your kids. Um, I just think it'd be terrible. And I'm assuming right now, there's just three units, three barrels, trash barrels. You're gonna try to squeeze, and I, I know the property really well. I walk by there all the time. Where are you gonna put the trash? This space for green space in a corner, I can almost guarantee you is like three feet by five feet. It's small. Um, I just feel like there's just enough cement in the neighborhood. We don't need more cars. We don't need more residents. We don't need, you know, trees removed. I'm opposed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right. Seeing none, that portion of program is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? All right. Seeing none. Uh, the public hearing's closed. Um, before we open with questions and comments to the board, um, Counselor Gary, I don't know if you wanted to comment or anything before we move, move to questions in terms of?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, we understand the neighbors' concerns. Um, I think we will be losing a tree to the rear of the property. Um, but the net gain is where I think we're adding three trees to the front of the property. So it's a net gain for trees. Granted, it's a mature tree in the rear of the property, but it's not in very good condition. Um, we will be planting shade trees in the front of the building, which is, you know, provide for a better streetscape than what is there now. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, those trees will be in front of that 1980s building. Um, so, you know, and again, my, you know, the, the, the proposed addition is to the rear of the property. It's on space. It's currently not used in any manner whatsoever right now. And we feel confident that the, that the parking can be managed without any detriment to the neighborhood. That's what I would add at this point. And again, we're happy to try to address any other concerns of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Gary. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jason Mello. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Citywide Properties. Uh, the tree to the rear of the property that we're proposing to remove, it's, it's a crab apple tree. Um, it's, it's not a big oak tree or maple tree. Um, it's, it's a medium-sized crab apple tree. Uh, and, and, you know, naturally, we're, we're not proposing touching any of the trees along the railroad that are not on our property. Um, so again, it's a single crab apple tree in, in the rear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mello. So now we'll open up questions and comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three Mr. Chairman. Um, I do have a couple of questions, though. Um, it's a very unusual lot. I'll say that because it's multifamily, but it's got two structures on it. Uh, I thought maybe there were two separate structures. My first thing was like, well, why are we, how are we relying on parking on one to deal with what we're dealing with now? But then I looked at it, and yeah, it's one lot with two structures on it. But looking at 5.22 regarding number of dwellings on the lot, it says, um, as far as no more than one primary residential dwelling on single families or traditional two families, but that says no more than six dwelling units may be constructed on a lot in a TMF district. And we're looking at a structure already that's got one building that has six units and one that has three units, and we want to add three more. So I guess Dylan, I mean, not Dylan, excuse me, Peter, my apologies. How are we not running a file of 5.22 here? Or Counsel, do you want to elaborate on?
Yes, I can answer that. So, uh, the code pursuant to 4.2.5 allows you to expand a non-conforming use if it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So that's what we're proposing here. So similar to what we did on Bridge Street for a different property owned by Citywide.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's, that's what the code provides for. That's what we're requesting. So we're requesting our special permit from the planning board.
Okay.
Sought to 4.2.5.
Okay. And that, if they grant you the special permit, then that should alleviate the need for?
That allows for the use for the, for the additional, expanding the non-conforming.
So that makes 5.22.
Right.
Null and void. They get, if you're granted the special permit.
Right.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to elaborate on that, uh, clarify that too, because it was, I did find that a little unusual, that we get, we're dealing with two structures on one lot. Um, as far as the building addition is concerned, and Mr. Hammer, if you can, I don't know if you want, just, I just wanna try to figure out, uh, if you can go to the plans where they, where the building, yep. So looking at the addition, the addition looks like, it appears to be, the roof at least, or the addition itself appears to be higher than the current structure. Why, why are we, why is that? Why, why, why are we building something that's higher than the existing structure is?
Well, it's, it's slightly higher. It's, it's a, it's a pitch, really.
Yeah.
Um, the existing dwelling is, you know, two stories plus that lockup attic.
Okay. Um, any reason, I guess, I guess, I get back to, why can't we just make it match to what the existing structure is? Is there any, any reason why it's, why it has to be that high?
Well, you know, it allows, it would be difficult to get three units in a two-story structure.
Yep.
Um, you know, it's, it was, it was thought out with the designer here, and it was, you know, I, I, if you look at the rendering, which we provided, I think it's a, you know, I think it's a good fit. It's a, at the, the end of the day, will be additional landscaping around that property look better, much better than the property looks right now.
Yeah, you can put up that, uh, rendering.
Now, Mr. Hammer, do you have any? Any comment? Or, I don't know, you look like you want to?
Do you want to just?
No, no, I got it right here. I'm looking at it, but I didn't, it looks like you were grabbing something. You had something to add. So, I don't know, but, um, I mean.
I'd like to just add one answer to that question.
Sure.
So you have ceiling height that you have to take into consideration on that third floor, and then you're also trying to give the roof some pitch in order to, um, to have slope on your roof or snow, uh, coming off of the roof and for, for rainwater as well.
Yeah.
Instead of it being a, a flat roof.
Okay. All right. Um, I mean, I think it'll work, but it just kinda, I don't know, it just seems like, just think it's gonna look a little strange where the, the rear of the property is gonna be higher than the thing. But I get it. I understand with the pitch and, of the roof and everything. And it, the original building being built in, what again, 19, how old is the original building in? 19 some?
Yeah, 1900.
1900? Yeah. So, people a lot shorter back then. So, um, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes, Mr. Huby. Mr. Huby, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions. On the existing site to the, I'll say rear, but it's not really the rear, it's the side of the, uh, brick apartment. You said it's paved right now.
Yes, back in.
Um, but you, you're gonna convert those into four stacked parking spots, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, what I didn't see on the proposal is the dimensions, because I know that's where the dumpster is, um, at the end of it. So, so it looks like it's a pretty tight squeeze to get that top parking spot in by the stockade fence that's covering. What's the distance between the end of the parking spot in that stockade fence?
It's approximately, uh, five feet. So it is tight parking. It's essentially existing non-conforming parking. Uh, it's the way they, they fit in there now, and, um, the owner feels as though that they're still gonna be able to utilize those parking spots for what they're used for now.
Right. But I, I guess, we're asking for, for a variance for three off-street parking spots, but if we have parking spots that aren't usable, I mean, if, if there's a car to the right of that car, you can't get out of your, out of your parking spot.
Well, they're gonna be usable because they're gonna be utilized by the same people own the spaces.
So they're gonna be assigned?
They're gonna be assigned spaces. That's correct.
Okay. Um, I did, uh, notice that it was mentioned a couple of times that you're taking only one tree down, but on that plan, there's, there's three trees coming down.
Yes. Uh, here, there's some smaller trees here that are, need, need to.
To make the parking spots.
Make these parking spots more usable.
Okay. So it's, it's more than one tree. It's, it's three trees coming down.
I was just talking about where the addition was going.
Right.
So yes, there is three.
Right. Uh, and, and there's no trees in front of that, uh, brick apartment building currently?
Here.
Those aren't, there's no?
No, there's just a, yeah, grassed area.
Just grass?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm glad the, the neighbor, I didn't catch your name, was here, Stephanie, and spoke so highly of, um, Marginal Street. You're at 33?
Down.
No, it's down to the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, that way.
Oh.
So, the reason I know that is because from 1978 to 1995, I lived at 39 Marginal Street. Um, and it's a great neighborhood. Um, I, I knew, so obviously I lived there before the brick, uh, building was, was installed. There used to just be parking garages back there. Um, and, and it does, that, that's the part of the neighborhood that kinda sticks out like a sore thumb, but that's not really why we're here, so it's already there. Um, the train tracks, I, I understand, um, what you're saying with the trees, and you can't see back there. And I, I guess, one of my questions in, in, would be, I noticed the bedrooms are on the back wall, and I know.
Uh, yep.
Yep. Uh, the two bedrooms are on the back wall of all the things. And I was just wondering why, just because the train, when it goes by, it's very noticeable, especially when people are asleep in there. I, like I said, my bedroom was probably 30 feet off the property line, and then we had, um, you know, going down to the train tracks. And I'm guessing there was a reason that the bedrooms were put back there. And, and again, it has nothing to do with parking. It's just kind of, um, confusing to me. But I saw the rendering of what's gonna, um, take place. I think it's, um, it would be beneficial to, to the neighborhood. Uh, it does look very good, and I've been driving down there. Marginal Street gets congested with parking, but I think it's more towards, um, down towards Stevens Street. It seems like the, the parking at this facility, uh, doesn't overflow to the street, which, um, the property manager had, had spoken to. Uh, it's a concern, you know, if, it's, if it's not, um, fully utilized with cars right now. In the future, it could be. I grew up there. There were no cars on the street. It, it, it's something, you know, we have to keep in mind, but I mean, I like the project. Um, I understand we don't want to cut down trees, but we're trying to replace some of them, which is, uh, which is good. I, I do have a question. You were concerned about trash. I know there's a dumpster for the other units to. I know there's a dumpster for the other units. Does 21 utilize city trash and recycling, or does...
Three families. Three street families.
Okay, so could they utilize the dumpster?
Where?
Nope.
Yes.
We currently have a six-yard dumpster at the 15 Marginal Street property.
Right. You can see, I believe it's identified on the plot plan.
Yep.
So it's in between both, it's in between both of the structures. That six-yard dumpster could be used for both properties.
Okay.
At this time, the three-family home has municipal waste service. But if that increases from three units, municipal waste would no longer be an option.
They'd have to move to the dumpster.
We'd have to, we'd have to get roll-away toters, which we do at some of our properties where we can't have a dumpster. We have our trash hauler provide roll-away toters. In this case, both properties could use the six-yard dumpster that's on site.
That's good.
Yep.
I appreciate the answer.
We could serve, right now, that dumpster, that dumpster's serviced once a week right now. We could increase the frequency if we had to. The six-yard dumpster right now for the six-unit building is oversized, but picking it up twice a week wouldn't be a problem.
Right, because I think it's a legitimate concern. If we, if we, you know, add additional units on there, they would have to move, it would slide off the dumpster, but, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hovey. The chair organizes, Mr. Prokop, Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think some of the responses that I received has satisfied my curiosity. I, especially Mr. Hovey, made a good point, which I was going to address, about the amount of trees, because I believe the applicant said that there was only one tree that's going to remove, the crabapple tree, but on the plan, it says three, right?
That's correct, yeah. I was considering where the addition was going to be, so I misspoke about that.
Okay, got it. So, and you are going to replace that, but you're going to put some trees in the front?
We are.
I agree, I think it's, it's, it would help the neighborhood. Are you doing anything with, I saw that there's a three-door garage, garage in the back? Is that...
The garage is coming down.
Coming down.
And there'll be additional parking there, and as Matt mentioned, there'll be a little bit of additional green space, not usable open space, but green space and snow storage area.
And, yeah, I just wanted to be sure that I got the number of parking spaces. I think that, again, the project in whole is nice. I think it would, you know, spruce up the neighborhood, so I'm not concerned about that. But anytime that someone, you know, speak, you know, opposing for the reasons that they feel that's important to them, I think it's always something we want to address. But I, I would hope, as you mentioned, you keep that green spaces as much as you can. The neighborhood is a nice neighborhood, it does seem like it's very quiet and peaceful, so, again, I just think that it fits within, you know, what the neighborhood looks like today, so I'm hoping that, that, you know, that people are happy with, when the job is finished. And it seems like the applicant, Citywide, has a good reputation in being mindful. I know the property on Bridge Street as well, so I would, as long as, you know, you addressed any concerns that, like the butters that may want to, you know, talk to you about, I think this would be a good project. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prokop. The chair organizes, Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the project very much. I look upon it very favorably. It is a very nice neighborhood, and this will do nothing but enhance it further. And with respect to your dad, he has a tremendous reputation, and I'm very confident that this project will be, just like all his others. So I support the petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. The chair organizes, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad we're talking about trees.
Thought you would be.
Love trees. But I just want to say, we need crabapple trees. I planted one in front of my house, by the way, but I'm a little further away from your house. I just want to start by saying how appreciative I am, and I think the community of Lowell is to have such a great company as your own, Citywide, taking care of these properties. You've done outstanding work, and it's great to see you doing more work, anyway. I want to ask, the pavement behind that adjacent, the 80s building, phew, that's quite a depression. Are you resolving that in any way? Is there any work being done on that pavement back there? Because...
Jason, come up.
Sorry about that.
Our plan would be to repave.
Okay.
Yeah, so I do recognize that there's been some sinkholes that formed.
Yeah, definitely.
They seem to have gotten worse quickly over the past three to four years.
Yes, something's going on.
So that, you know, I'm not sure if it's just the base underneath that pavement wasn't done correctly back when the building was built in the 80s.
Okay.
But we would be, we would have to install stormwater mitigation anyway, so, you know, we would be ripping that pavement out and regrading and repaving.
That's wonderful. So you're, you're going to be changing the pavement at the adjacent 80s building to put stormwater mitigation under that existing pavement?
Correct. And that's probably...
Oh, that's fabulous.
That's probably one of the reasons why the pavement, why the sinkholes have gotten so bad, is, you know, currently there is no, no stormwater mitigation system there.
Okay, that's great. Are you doing a, so the site plan shows a stockade fence around the dumpster? We don't currently have one, I don't think, on site?
There is.
There is one?
Yep, yeah, there is.
Okay, maybe I missed it, all right.
It's wooden.
All right. And then the plan submitted, isn't the landscape plan, you have a plan up here that has some shade trees on it. The one that's, Peter's available on the site, doesn't have that. So I'd like a condition, if we could, about landscaping, because the documents that we seem to have for this application don't include shade trees on the street.
And I was going to add that we could add a shade tree between the two that are proposed. So there's three proposed out there now, and we could add a fourth.
Okay, so the condition could be to provide four shade trees along Marginal Ave, two-and-a-half-inch caliper, okay. And then additional landscaping along the east side of the existing three-family building as indicated in the rendering? Right now, that's a paved surface?
It's actually lawn right now?
I think it's actually sidewalk by the fence on the east side of the existing...
I'm just looking at some photos.
So there's a sidewalk there?
Mm-hmm.
So the rendering indicates landscaping.
There's grass, yeah, there's grass there now on the other side of the chain link fence.
Okay, do you want to pull up your rendering, and you can just see what I'm getting at?
Oh, sorry.
Because the rendering doesn't...
Oh, the rent, yeah, the elevation rendering.
So is the rendering to be not paid attention to when it comes to landscaping? Or are you going to add landscaping?
That was, that was the architect adding some landscaping to the rendering.
Which you had no intent to do.
It wasn't something that I represented on the site plan. What was the question? I'm sorry. So the question, I believe, is, is this the landscaping we're going to do around the building? Yes, that's what we're proposing to do. So we can, we can condition this on landscaping, DPD approving the landscape plan.
I'd rather not leave it to DPD, but actually make it more specific landscaping condition, if we could.
Sure.
That we will provide landscaping on the east side of the three-family building, existing three-family, as indicated in the rendering.
That's fine. Excellent.
Right. And then the mature trees on the west side of that three-family building that exist in that narrow little three-foot green strip. So on the west side, there's that pavement, yep, on the west, yep. Nope, not in the back, on the west side. Yep, that strip is full of mature trees currently.
Those are all staying.
And that the existing trees on the west side of the three, existing three-family will remain? Okay. That would be the condition I'd like to see for landscaping, because I want to just make sure that, you know, someone, the site guy, gets out there and gets a little carried away.
Right, no, that's perfectly acceptable.
That we have mature trees when we can, because the wildlife needs it, and the neighborhood needs it, and why not? We don't need to remove them where we don't need to. That would be the only condition that I'd like to see. And I think this is a good fit. I wish it wasn't quite as dense, two six families, two, yeah, two six families, wow. But we do need housing, and we do need housing around the university for sure. So that's, that's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Counselor, again, you and your team, Mr. Hammer, are always well-prepared with paperwork and documentation, and the plans, and the overview. I appreciate it. I know my colleagues do, too. You know, I always say that I'm, I'm kind of a layman guy, you know? I work with kids, this is not my expertise. But, you know, I do believe that what you're asking for is, you know, it's not a substantial detriment, and it adds housing to kind of the, a very needed housing stock for our community. You know, I think you could have probably even asked for more, you know, probably wouldn't get approved, but I think you could have, that the relief that you're seeking could have been a lot, a lot more intense, in my opinion. You know, would this, would this add some density in terms of parking and traffic? It will, but I think, I think you have good plans to mitigate this, and I know that the Mello family have been very good builders and community people, so I think you're going to do everything right by the neighbors. You know, ma'am, I know you're here tonight, but they have a very good reputation, they're going to do right by their neighborhood, by their area, so, you know, I suggest you just talk to them if you have any issues, they'll work with the whole neighborhood, I'm sure. And again, Counselor, you know, I think this is a good project, you know, I can vote in favor. So you're agreeable to all the conditions we talked about?
We are.
Okay. If there's no further comments by my colleagues, we move forward with the motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-39 for variance at 21 Marginal Street, and the relief for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, backyard setback, and usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and also requirement relief under section 6.1 for off-street parking requirement, with the condition that the applicant provide four shade trees along Marginal Street at a minimum of two-and-a-half-inch caliper, that the applicant provide shrubs as indicated on the rendering along the east side of the existing three-family, and that the remaining, that the existing mature trees on the west side of the existing three-family remain.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan. Chair, roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, Counselor, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, we have on the new business, ZBA-2023-37, a petition of the variance to applicants, Mahida Gonzalez, property located at 105 Long Metal Drive. The applicant has applied to his zoning board appeal, seeking variance approval to construct a second driveway at 105 Long Metal Drive. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval from the zoning board appeals per section 6.1 from the maximum curb cut requirements, and any other relief required under the low zone ordinance. Good evening, and thank you for your patience, family, I know it's been a long night.
Thank you, good evening, guys. So my name is Dorcas Gonzalez, I am the co-owner of the house with my mother. So we're just looking for, to add the driveway in front of the house where the new addition is. We do have an existing driveway on the other side, on Morning Side Drive. I know that you got, it was sent some comments to us regarding the opening and the, of the driveway. Those are going to be resolved. I believe there was just an error with the architect, he wasn't aware of the...
My name, Maeda Gonzalez, 105 Long Metal Drive. My understudy, there was some questionable discrepancy with the area of four feet, and I forward the e-bail to Mr. James Aho, our server, and to Mr. Charles Burgas. And Ms. Aho called, and I believe it was resolved. In addition, it was requested that we do an update, he gave me the update, I sent to, I sent that to Mr. Dylan, as well as took about two weeks ago, hard copy, and when I called back last week to see if there's any additional question or concern, he said that I just have to come in. I know there's concern about the, there's no concern, there were question in terms of the feet, and I think Mr. Aho addressed it.
Do you guys have any questions?
Okay. If that's all, we'll open up to the hearing to the public, okay?
Okay.
Anyone who wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Hovey. We did have a letter, an opposition from...
From 10.
Yeah. You know, I'm not going to read it, but I'm just going to...
I know what it says, yeah, we got the copy of the letter.
Yeah.
I just want to quickly say, we had record rainfall this past summer, and we've never gotten water in our basement, and we got water in both sides, on the old side and on the newer side. I'm not sure if it had to do with the record rainfall and the saturated ground throughout the summer, but we'll, like, we'll look at it again to see if it's something that's an ongoing issue overall.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
We could address that with Mr. Burgas, because she claims that maybe the slant of the way, I mean, I could address, they usually are pretty good in accommodating, and they would, they're very, they're excellent in addressing any issues, so we would, and it's a shame that Marilyn didn't come and just say, and we could have dealt with it with Mr. Burgas, you know, when it did happen.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the gist of the letter, just, they were concerned with the inflow of water and slant of the road, and the excess water towards their property, the Taveras. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open the questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. One of, one of the questions that we got was, we don't know how wide the existing driveway is, so we don't know how much relief we're granting.
So, the existing driveway, is it, it's... I believe it said it was, we were only allowed 18 feet, and I believe he put 20 feet opening?
No, no.
Is that what it was?
No, that's, that's the proposed driveway.
Are you talking about the drive-thru morning side?
Yep.
Yeah. The house is in Long Meadow, and I do have problem walking, so I do have a handicap plate, and initially, Mr. Burgas saw that he could put the driveway right next to the entrance of the new, like, in the middle of the two entrances, and they said that we have to come...
No, no, I, I understand why you're doing it. My, my question is, we're, we're trying to grant curb cut relief, but we don't know how much, how wide the existing driveway is.
Oh.
Oh.
We have, like, two cars, that we could fit two cars as we go in.
Yeah, I don't know what the existing width is of the, one on the morning side drive. We do fit about two cars, maybe three cars if we, like, stick them in side by side.
Like?
Two and one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. I understand. I, I, I'm just, without knowing how wide it is, then we don't actually know how much relief we're giving. And, you know, it's, it's easy to condition that the proposed one just be 18 feet wide, which is fine, but again, we don't know the relief we're giving if we don't know the existing driveway. Now, do you guys plan on keeping the, the existing driveway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and one of the problem is that I do get all water from the street, so really, sometimes we cannot even dry, put the cars really well. We have to keep it almost in the, near the street, because somehow this will slam and get all the water.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it would be replacing a driveway, not adding a driveway. Again, it's going to be difficult to, to grant relief, not knowing how much relief we're actually granting. I think an easy proposal is to do the 18 feet instead of the 20 feet, but looking at the neighbors, it all looks like their driveways flow out to the right and left. So, your, your neighbor has a concern with water running off into their house. With the grade of your yard, I can understand why, right? Slopes down into, to their house. With paving in the front yard, this is only going to exacerbate, exacerbate the, the situation. I would like to see some kind of drainage or filtration to the left of this, maybe to help them with the runoff, but, I mean, maybe that's something you could talk to with, with the contractor that's doing it, but I, I'd really like to, to know how much relief we're granting here, but I'll listen to the rest of the, the board here.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair organizes, Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple of quick questions. So, the driveway that you are looking for relief for is in front of the house on Long Meadow, right? 105 Long Meadow? And is that next to the newly renovated part of the house?
Yes.
So, it would be in between both the new side and the older side.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I get it. I, I think that's one of the questions we were asking about the, the feet, because as, as Member Hovey said, you know, we'd need about 18 feet. Are you planning on, between the driveway, between the newly constructed house and where the driveway is going to be, are you planning on paving, or are you planning on landscaping, like grass, or anything?
There's going to be landscaping and a walkway.
So, it's, it's just going to be a walkway? You're not going to be paving the whole area?
No. There'll be, in the plan that we got, that he gave us, there's a walkway that'll connect the driveway, and there's going to be landscaping.
On both sides?
Yeah.
And there will be one area where to put a car, but I don't think he's going to pave the whole side.
No, it's not paving the whole side. It's just a driveway, the two walkways, and then it'll be landscaping around it.
Okay. I don't know if... Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I reconcile the, the site plan versus what's being said here.
So, when he gave, I don't, do you have the plan in front?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it, that this is, you did submit a revised plan, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I just want to be sure. I mean, it's, it's, I, I think once we clear up any doubts, I mean, about the, the footage that's needed, I, I think that, again, the, the property seems well-done, well-maintained, so I, I don't think I would have a problem in, in, in supporting your project. But I think, I want to make sure that the landscape in front, because I think if you, the, the concern that your mother has could be because if you pave it, that you will have, you know, that runage of water that could impact your neighbors, whereas if it's landscape, there might be more of a restriction of, of...
Okay.
Of water, so... Again, I applaud the effort. I, I think it's, it's, I think it's well worth its purpose, and I don't think that it's going to be negatively impacting much of the neighborhood at all, so... That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes, Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be in favor of this petition with the proposed condition indicated on number eight from the memorandum from our DPD, indicating that the applicant shall maintain landscaped open space on all portions of the lot, not utilized as a driveway or a walkway. You would be in agreeance to that?
Yes.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I can clarify a couple of things. We're, we're not here to worry about the existing driveway, as I take it from the comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, we're... No.
The existing driveway isn't part of our discussion tonight, is the proposed driveway?
No, but, and the board members can correct me if I'm wrong, but are, are they are looking for information, because if there's multiple curb cuts, they're trying to figure out how much relief is being granted total? Yeah.
So, without having a existing curb cut dimension, which might be 22 feet or something, whatever it is, we don't know the relief that we're looking for?
No.
Okay. But we could grant relief to provide a second driveway with two parking spaces and a 20-foot wide curb cut?
Yeah.
And just not address the other curb cut?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I, I think the board members were, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, just asking to get more information about the project. It's, it's not like a legal issue.
I, I'm just seeing if we can decide this tonight, or if we have to continue it again to get that additional information?
I think you guys can decide tonight.
Okay. And then, I think some of the comments here, about the 3.5 and the four-foot dimension, offset, whatever, I think clearly, on the plan as I read it, that's landscaping. That has nothing to do with pavement. So, some of these comments, I think, are a little bit tedious, but, and then I think I'd like to make a condition that the proposed paved parking spaces slope to the street, so that there would be no water from the new paved surfaces sloping to the neighbor's foundation, so I'd just like to see that as a condition. We don't have grading on this plan, so we can't tell, but I think that it has to slope to the street, just based on the way the site currently exists. So, that would place all the water from this additional pavement on the street and into the sewer systems, or the stormwater systems, versus her yard. So, that'd be the only condition that I'd like to see. And I, I, I think that the second condition that was mentioned by Mr. Brier about the landscaped area remaining open would be the second, so that's it. Thank you.
Madam, you know, I, I think it's fine that you want to be on the driveway in your home. We just got to do it a way that's safe and appropriate. With all the conversation we just had now, you're, it seems like you're going to go finalize things with your planner, or architect, or engineer, and then the condition in terms of what we talked about, maintain the landscaped open space to all the portions of the lot, and the driveway, and the walkway, and then, and, and the parking, the, the slope of the spot slopes to the street, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think this is fine, you know, I think, you know, it makes sense, you know, I, I can support this. If there's no further comments by my colleagues who have a motion? Oh, Mr., the Vice Chairman, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have an opportunity to speak, so, thank you.
I apologize for the Vice Chairman.
No worries, I thought. How you doing on Orthodox, uh...
I'm sorry.
Way this time.
Go ahead.
On the line. No worries.
Floor is yours, sir.
So, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm really struggling with why you need two driveways. I really am. I'm sorry, it's just kind of, the, the intent of zoning...
So, originally, I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
Let me, let me get my thoughts, then I'll...
Okay.
Get, get, no, I'll probably ask you some questions, so just give me a second. I understand the purpose for the, for the front driveway. I get it. But now you got a front driveway with two walkways, one going towards the addition, and one going towards the initial one that's going towards the house. And now you have a back driveway as well, that also has a handicap ramp and stair, stairways to go there. I'm just not seeing the purpose of that back, if, if we, if we grant the relief and grant you the driveway in the front, I'm not seeing the purpose of having that back driveway there anymore. It should be turned into some form of green space, if, if that's the case. That's my, that's my, that's my thinking, but I don't know, maybe you can convince me otherwise. What's the purpose of, how is this, what's the purpose of the second, if you, it's one way or the other? If you want in the front, I mean, as long as it's going to, you know, as long as we can mitigate the water runoff or whatever, that's fine, but what makes the purpose of the back driveway now with the handicap ramp? I'm, it's this, there's really, it's a single-family.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit? I'm just kind of, just kind of puzzled.
Absolutely, I can clarify for you. So, originally, the, the driveway was in the front of the house before we bought it, and then it was moved to the side on Morning Side Drive, because there was a garage and a driveway on Long Meadow in front of the house.
Okay.
When we bought it, they had already torn down the garage, made a sunroom, and put the driveway on Morning Side Drive. So, we bought the house with the driveway on that side of the house. When we did this addition, we want space in the driveway in the front, for my mom could go to her side, and I could go on my side. My sister also lives there, so there's like four cars. And at some point, we were parking our cars on the lawn, because we didn't have enough space in our driveway, our current driveway, with the way it's set up and the water that runs, makes a, a little lake in our, that drive, on that side. That's why we're going to put the driveway in the front, figure it out. We did have a handicap ramp there, because we had a sister in a wheelchair at one point, and that was easy access to her getting into the house. We don't have, we don't need it anymore, and it's something down the road that we're going to consider getting rid of and making more green space. I just think, at this point, we have this really big project, so we're just trying to figure out next steps, and if we're going to keep that driveway, and if we have enough cars, that we only need that one driveway, because there's only three of us in the house that drive right now.
But also, there is green space, like, in the entrance for the kitchen, there's a big area with a big tree. Then around the house, there's a big area, and I, I have tree, I have like flowers and stuff. And then on the other side, which is right next to Marilyn's house, there will be a green space as well, so, besides the backyard. So, there will be like green spaces, so, in different area, but another thing, during the winter, it's very dangerous to park. You can't park in the street, in that area, in the, with the snow. Another thing is, we had gotten hit, our cars, when we do park in the streets, you know, or hit and run, and there have been several incidents that car had come into our lawn, and had gone all the way, maybe teenagers, I don't know, gone all the way across my house to the pole. So, there, there is so issue of safety that I'm concerned.
I don't know if that answers your question. I mean, we will, down the road, think about it, but I think at this point, this project has been really...
No, I, I understand, down the road, yeah, you think about it, but I'm looking at it as opening up a spot that's not going to be utilized, and why not take care of it now, and make it green space? That's my, that's my, my thinking, but, I mean, I'm not generally opposed to you having the driveway out in the front, but...
I mean, we will make accommodation, or any recommendation, and I'm passing...
I totally understand it. I think we were using the side entrance, because there was no driveway in the front of the house with how it was set up previously. So, that's why that driveway was there. We were using that side entrance more, because there was no driveway in the front of the house, and we weren't parking in the front. And that was before we bought it, so... Definitely something to think about. I'm not going to say no. It's just, this is what we have right now.
Peter, I mean, I don't know, is there anything to add about the green space or anything that's being, I know there was a comment from Dillon about, should the board wish to grant the variance to the applicant that Member Brier mentioned, but it just seems to me that, I don't know, purpose of the one family, one driveway. I understand it's an unusual position with right around the corner, and you got two driveways, but, I don't know, I'm just kind of trying to save green space here. Well, I'm the last to speak, so I'm, I don't know, I'll still want it, but, you know, if anybody else, any other members of the board have any thoughts or comments, then I'm all ears, but I don't know, I'm just, I'm struggling with it a little bit, so...
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Mr. McCarthy, did you, go ahead, sir.
The only comment I could make is that the desire to have the parking in the, off a ledge, off of Long Meadow where you enter the house, is compromised, because you only have room for one depth space. You can't do too deep. And so, most of the houses, not a lot of the houses in that neighborhood have parking off-street for four spaces or more, and so you're really kind of pushed to have a secondary off-street parking on the side there to allow for the third car or the fourth car, because you can't do that in the front without making a curb cut that's, you know, 32 feet wide, which I, I think I'd be against. So, anyway, I think having the flexibility of having a third car off-street parking space, as is done in a lot of the residences in that neighborhood, where they have longer driveways and they're stacked too deep, you, you would be able to provide that with your current paved situation, so I, I think it makes sense, just because of the compromise with the front yard depth only being one car deep. of the compromise with the front yard depth only being one car deep, so, that's my opinion.
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, any other comments by my colleagues? All right, um, if we have no further comments, um, we'll, we'll move forward with the motion with the conditions we talked about.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven for variance at one oh five Long Meadow Drive, for, um, proposed variance approval for the, um, zoning board per section six point one for minimum curb cut requirement, and for any other relief required by the low zoning ordinance with the condition that the applicant maintain landscaped open space on all portions of the lot not proposed to be driveway or walkway, and that the applicant provide, uh, drainage on the new walk, on new driveway to slope to the street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Havi, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve of condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve of conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, folks, you've been approved, thank you for coming out tonight, thank you for waiting, I know it's been a long night, thank, thank you, have a good night. All right, uh, moving on to other business, we have the minutes for approval for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the meeting minutes, any, um, comments, additions, edits from the minutes from that evening? Seeing none by my colleagues, um, can we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes, second by, by Mr. Prokop, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, all right, any other comments before we adjourn, from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn, second by Mr. Havi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned, thank you, have a good night, folks.
Good night.
Yep.
[music]